Bob, you're muted.
Sorry. Announcement is made that adequate notice of meaning has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10 calling for the six F S of the New Jersey Open Post meetings. Laura, you want to read your little, you want to say what you have to say?
Yes. Yes. This announcement is for members of the public who have joined this meeting on their computer and select option. If you dialed into the system using your phone, you will not be able to raise your hand to comment. To have the ability to raise your hand and comment, you must do the following. Leave the meeting, rejoin the meeting. When selecting audio, choose the option to have the system call you and input the phone number you wish to be called on. This option will pair your computer with your phone and will allow you to raise your hand if you wish to comment during the public session. There you go.
Laura, you want to call it all?
Berkowitz.
Yeah.
Joshkowitz. Kaplan. Kaplan.
Yeah.
Harik. Prasad. Prasad. Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willins.
Here.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
We also have with us our board attorney, Mr. King, our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to the board that is not on this evening's agenda? Laura, nothing?
Um. I see Nick Homiak's hand raised.
Okay.
Nick, can you hear us?
Yes.
Can you hear us, Nick?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
You have something?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, is there any particular reason why this meeting of the zoning board of adjustments cannot go public? For example, like the town council is now doing?
I will answer that question as it was answered to you last night by the business administrator. We have some applications that are just too large to be held in public, such as we have tonight. And another meeting that had already been noticed for this type of event, and it was, there wasn't enough time for them to re-notice and had to do. Anything else?
Um, okay, but is there any hope for the future? And any hope for the near future?
Nick, we had a meeting in person just last week. We've, we're had both planning board and board of adjustment are back in person. But last week, they each had a meeting. So we're, we're almost finished with our virtuals.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Otherwise, please put your hand down. No more hands, Bob.
Thank you, Nora. Someone want to move resolution 2114 so we can move on?
So move Snyder.
A second?
Second idea.
The discussion, Nora, call it all.
Josh, not here, Kaplan.
Yes.
Harik.
Yes.
Harik. Ready.
Yeah, yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Let's go to the agenda. Case number 2056, Nikki Mahmudi, 35 Troy Road. See variance to legalize the front porch, legalize the front walk and stall front pad and walk, construct an open deck with stairs and driveway. And it requires a bunch of variances. Yards and courts, yards and courts, accessory side yard, yards and courts, building coverage and impervious coverage. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Sir, if you could unmute yourself. Mr. Mahmudi, if you could unmute, thank you. Did you raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony about to give before the board's truth to help you God?
I do.
Yes.
And you are the owner of the subject property?
Yes, I am. How do I look?
So you have Nikki Mahmudi and you have Artem Mahmudi who will be giving testimony?
I guess it looks unprofessional.
And are you, are you, both of you, what are you, the husband and wife or?
Yeah, mother and son here.
Yeah, there's a form. All right, thank you. Your, Mr. Chairman, the mother who's the owner of the subject property sworn and the son is also sworn.
Okay.
But the quorum is fine.
So we are here because you want to do some improvements and you found out that some of your existing improvements were not legit. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, I'll cover it. You'll see.
With regards, who's talking?
It's attorney, attorney Vogel, if you could mute.
Hello?
So. So. With regard to the existing variances on the existing item. Can you explain how they got there? Were they there when you bought the house or did you do those or what?
Yes, for the steps at the front of the house, we had extended them just a little bit because we didn't really have a front porch. On our plan, we did set them up and we did have the inspector check them out. It was just that with the zoning, because of the addition to the driveway that we exceeded, that we wanted to exceed, the the inspectors kind of informed us that zoning, we would have to go through a variance for that. So.
One quick question. Do you say that you wanted to exceed or you did exceed?
We wanted to.
Okay, you haven't yet.
Did you?
No.
No, wait, can we just bear with everyone so I can get a little basic information before everybody starts asking questions? The stairs, did you have a building permit to put the stairs in?
Yes.
You did. And unfortunately, you've made them bigger than they were supposed to be.
Correct.
That's number one. Number two is the front walk. Was that on your plan, original plans, or was that just put in?
That was not on the original plan, but it was kind of on the original plan there, it was just the steps with no walkway. So we, you know, had just an inspector, we explained to them and then we put it in the prints that, you know, we would need a walkway. It's not, you know, it can't just be grass going to the steps. So that's how it just went forth.
All right. That's one and two. Now, number three. Side yard patio, you want to put a three and a half feet. Oh, it exists an existing patio.
Uh, no, I don't think we have an existing patio now. There's no patio.
Oh, you're an existing three and a half foot setback. I guess that's what that is. Doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
Can you see the patio?
I think it might be for the steps because kind of at the steps, what we extended, it was, it can be called the patio, I guess, because it just kind of went out three feet to the side and then it went down to the steps. So just instead of just having steps, we kind of just went out a little bit. So there's just a little area to walk. I think that may be what you're speaking about.
Unfortunately, I don't know what I'm speaking about because I can't, I can't follow this information. You want to put a patio on the side of your house, rectangular patio on the side of your house. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And it says it's going to be 440 square feet. And you're proposing it to be three and a half feet from the sideline. Uh, doesn't look like you've got a whole heck of a lot of room on the side. So you can't make that any narrower than it is.
Correct.
Know what the dimensions of that patio is?
The dimensions, I think they were about, sorry.
But you're talking about the deck, right?
Yeah, the deck and the sidewalk.
Yeah. Dimension, we do have.
The thing says patio. accessory side yard patio. Existing is three and a half, allowed is six feet, you're proposing three and a half. Oh, in the back, in the back, I see, I see. You've got, you're, you're proposing a patio with a three and a half foot setback alongside a, and I can't read what that says. A stucco shed? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Storage shed. And the storage shed is three and a half feet from, from the sideline.
Three sixty.
Okay, that makes sense. Yes.
Are you requesting a shed?
No.
Just point one feet from the, from the sideline?
No, I think what's happened, the, the deck was already there. But we were, I think we were requesting, it's not there currently, but we, it was on the plan originally. I think we're just requesting it to be just a little bit larger. We are intending on buying, purchasing the property that's on the side of our house. Uh, on the survey, you can see, I don't know if you have that, uh, it's about 50 feet on the side of the house and we have been willing to purchase it. So it was just something we were thinking about adding on to the deck, just to make it a little bit wider until, you know.
Are you under contract to buy the lot next door?
No, we don't have the contract yet. We've just been going along with it now. We're just trying to get along with it.
Along with it. I don't, I don't know what that means, but it's a good, it's a good, it's a good.
It's a new owner, new owner right now. So we're just trying to communicate with them.
What makes you think he's going to sell it to you if it's a new owner?
Uh.
I'm very, I'm very, I'm very confused. Yes.
I think the one you're talking about, the patio by the shed, I don't think that I need it anymore. It is existing right now. But just to, you know, it was there for the whole house. Now the nuance that we're building, I don't think I'm going to need that patio by the shed. So I don't know why the surveyor put that in, but it's unnecessary.
Is it there or not there?
It's, it's in there with pavers, just for the barbecue right now. But I don't need that. As long as I build the deck, I don't need that space there.
So you're going to eliminate that, that patio?
Yeah, that one I don't need.
That has a three and a half foot, three and a half foot setback. But yet the storage shed behind it's only got a one tenth of a foot setback and they look like they're in line.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, Chaz, do you have this document with Chaz? Chaz disappeared.
And again?
John, John, can you, Chaz, can you make heads or tails of this document?
Um, I suspect that the document is not the scale. It normally is a larger scale than this.
Yeah.
So we can't really scale anything off of it. Um, I'd have to talk to that. John, can we have two driveways on a piece of property like this within that kind of distance?
Well, the limitation of the driveways other than to be five feet from property.
What's that?
The limitation really comes into play with lot coverage, which is their problem here. They got a variance some time ago for a lot of bridge and they're looking for more. I think the real question is asking why they need all these driveways.
Yeah, I think based on the questions that I've heard so far, it's not clear at all what's really existing versus what is proposed.
Okay. Okay, so the driveway in back of the house where the, the garage is in, where we have two car garage in the property right now, they're built in. That one is used to go to the garage. The existing driveway is in the front of the house, which it's very large right now, but it will not be that big. We only needed 1,000 square foot, just at least to park the cars. Because the cars in the back, they only go to the garage. That's where we needed that driveway in the back. To go into the garage, to access the garage.
In the front, on the two car.
And to that end, to that end, this is. Yeah.
I'm looking at the existing plan and I see the asphalt driveway, but how, is it paved in the back? I see the paper patio for the shed, but how does a car get into the garage?
So right now, that's where we're trying to build, the garage or brand new build. We haven't done it yet. So that's what we're asking for that to drive with, to go to the little garage.
Yeah, they understand. This gravel right now, there's only gravel in the back. There is only pavers about 10, 10 by five in front of the shed. Those pavers are not going to be even, uh, they're going to probably be taken. So it was just on the garage on the back because we have the driveway that's a shared driveway with 35A Troy Road. In this case, we were also trying to have that as a driveway there as well, because when they go into their house, they turn around and make a U-turn, like a K-turn right there. So, um, we kind of did that just to also help them out and for a driveway for our garage. In the front of the house, there will not be anymore. It would just be one lot, one parking spot, just to have. To exist.
It's a thousand square foot.
Two piping.
And with, we have an access easement with our neighbor.
Now we have a five car.
How, how are you going to build a garage?
Oh, we, the garage is already built in.
The garage is in the house.
It's inside the house, two car garage.
Let me interrupt you. I think the best thing you could do here is the plan that we have is kind of being moved around as we talk. Take the clearly marked, the little patio in the back that's in front of the shed to be removed.
Yes, that one will be removed.
Let me finish. The driveway that's in the front of the house, you've got, it's, it's not for one car. It's, it's a thousand square feet on the, which we have, it's got to be small. It's got to be for a car, you know, ten, right after the steps, not what appears to be 22 feet wide.
The one we're proposing?
Then you have the driveway in the back and going to the garage.
Yes, so that driveway you cannot.
Clear it up and I think the board can understand this thing.
Yeah.
And you know, I think it would make a lot more sense to have a plan that's accurate than try to fiddle, figure it out today.
And maybe some pictures.
Whoever, whoever drew the plan with the drop in the front, that thing should be about half the size you're showing.
I mean, I guess.
Patio in the back should be shown as being removed.
As of now.
Too on about the adjoining property in the shared driveway. That's, that's important information too. We don't know if the, anything to be signed off on by the adjoining property.
Yeah, I, there, this is an access easement for two houses. We share the driveway.
Can you provide us with a copy of the easement?
Oh, of course. Should be on a survey though. It does say access easement on a drawing too. Yeah, the access easement, it's very small though, that even the, I don't know if you guys have the drawing in front of you. But this is access easement for two houses, ours and 35A Troy Road.
I have to look that up on the.
Okay.
Last question I have is in the front of the property. It's a sort of a rectangular area. And my copy is not so clear, so I can't read what it is.
Oh, I see.
Where it says garden, John?
Is that what that says?
It's, it's not quite a rectangle. It's a little.
Yeah, a little, is that what it says?
I think it says garden.
Yes, it says garden. Okay. We don't have to worry about that then.
But I think what Mr. Chadwick is saying is that the information that you provided here is not adequate enough for us to make a decision because you're adjusting things. And now it's going to change your impervious coverage or maybe your building coverage. I don't know. If you are proposing to not include the paper patio, we need to know the dimensions of paper patio. If you're going to cut the, the driveway in the front down to one car width, which is how wide, John?
Yeah, 12 feet would be plenty.
Okay, so if you're going to cut the driveway in the front down to 12 feet, we have to know what, how much you're removing so we can change these things.
Your overall site coverage, your overall site coverage is pretty high. And by eliminating these two paved areas, I think you'll have a much better case.
Yeah, I understand that. The only thing right now in the front of the house, the existing parking is like probably for five cars too. It's, it's big. So that's what we.
Elimination.
Yeah, we're eliminated. We're making it smaller because we know that we don't have.
No, I understand you, you want to change it, but we can't, unless you come up with dimensions and tell us what you really want, we can't go by these percentages.
I think all we need is.
We would, we would.
You're asking for almost 50% impervious coverage.
We need pictures.
Oh, pictures.
Yeah, and in addition to that, we also need explanation in regards to the updated functionality and utility of this property that causes you to shrink the coverage in the front and then just continue with the paving in the back.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that. What do you need?
Well, I, I'm just, I, you know, to Mr. Chadwick's point earlier where he, he definitely asked the question, you know, the real question is, why do you need, you know, so much, so much asphalt? You know what I mean? Around your property. And so I'm asking you, like, what's the new updated functionality of this property? You know, you say you only want one car on the side of that house. Is it just one car? Is there going to be a two car area? And, and, and how many vehicles are you ultimately planning to store on this property?
So this is a big house. It's a big family. We do park two cars in the garage, of course, but I have kids, I have guests coming over, so at least two more cars in the front of the house to have a space for it. So they don't block me by the garage.
Yeah, so what's on the plan? Posing, we're willing the front of the house to shorten it because we don't need that as much. That is just a little stop there because there is a driveway there currently. So the back of the house is where we need because we have the driveway back there. On the original plan, the architect drew the front because we already have an existing driveway. We're willing, we're proposing the both area, what is on the front of the house now, but we're willing to make it shorter if we have to.
I get it. I just want to know ultimately, you know, how many cars are going to be, you know, on average, I have, you have guests.
Yeah, two more, two more at least in the front. That's it. I saw.
The, the current application we have is not depicting what you're planning to do ultimately here. So we can't approve that application the way it's submitted. We'd like to see what you're really going to be doing. That's my opinion. And we don't see that here on this application.
So the square footage that you see, the proposed one, those are not correct, you're saying?
I'm saying this plan is not what you're testifying you're going to be doing.
Do cars park on the excess easement?
No, no, we cannot park cars there.
Need, need to revise your proposed survey to show exactly what you want to do. Yeah, that's what I'm saying too, Bernie.
I mean, I think what's on there is what we want to do. I don't know what's not.
I thought, yeah, that's, he did that.
We just had, we just had a discussion that the plan shows a patio in the back and you've indicated that's going to be removed.
So that.
The percent coverage will decrease by that amount. The driveway in the front of the house, you appear to be adamant that you're going to keep it, plus add driveway in the back. And you've heard the board say, this is a lot of coverage. At one point, we said that you needed a, a car to park by the front door.
Hmm.
Now your mother's saying, no, I need more than that. So you have to make some decisions here on how much coverage you need, why you need it. Because you're asking for a significant increase over what's allowed. You have to understand that. That's the rule.
I saw correctly.
I would suggest you take a breath. Sit down, say, okay, we can live with the driveway this wide in the front. Make a note, the patio is to come off. You take the same calculations that you have in your application, your overall site coverage should be reduced by something. Which is your benefit to get what you want to get as an approval.
Okay.
We waited more than a year for this. I don't know how long this will take again. I swear, I thought he put it the right way though, you know? 1,000 square foot in the front and 860 square foot in the back. And you guys are seeing that too much?
You didn't listen to me. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, what's saying is that I think we have to kind of talk about and see what we, if we can remove pavers in the back from in front of the shed and we can make the front of the house a little bit smaller with the driveway, then we can get approved with where we're going, correct?
But you, but you need to, you need to come back with accurate dimensions of how much you're going to reduce in the way of impervious coverage. Because you're at almost 50% impervious coverage right now, which is way high. So you need to, to, to retool that document and, and go through Jennifer's worksheet and make changes as to what you want on the, at revise. Okay?
We have to wait until now.
Does that make sense?
Okay, so we, we can't get an approval today? Back up or anything? Do we have to go through another six months of waiting and set all that up? How does this go along then?
Nora, when can we get them back on?
Can we do a special half hour, um, at the 11th meeting from seven to 7:30?
What meeting? July 11?
August 11? August 11?
August 11? Yeah, we can do a half hour that night.
If I'm. August 11, uh, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, make, make a note of that.
Without any extensions and no notice.
You'll have to, you'll have to, we'll, we will grant you the extension. I mean, we will grant you to carry to that case that night if, um, without any further notice, which means you don't have to notice your neighbors. But you have to.
So it can be live.
It's going to be a live meeting. Right, it's going to be a live meeting?
Yes, in person.
It'll be a live meeting in person. Are you in agreement with that?
Uh, yes, sir. Oh. So is there anything we can do with, like, kind of open it up so that we can start work? Cause August 11, we're having a wedding in October. So we're just trying to get everything started on the house. And we're just trying to get maybe just to, you know, the stop work order for a little bit. We won't be doing anything with the zoning. The town has just been telling us we can't, you know, open up the stop work order until we get approved for this.
We are, we are not in control of the town building department. We are the zoning board of adjustments. Uh, they will not give you any go ahead until you get approval. I'm sorry. I'm very, very sorry, but, um, we have rules and regulations we have to.
We don't need to.
And I can tell you that if we approve it on August 11th, you won't get a final document until the first meeting in September, which means you're not going to be able to do anything until the first week in September. I, again, I apologize, but.
The thing is though, I don't understand. Why can we get approval for the numbers that we provided though? We're not going more over these numbers. We probably go to less, but not over.
Look, I'm going to give you an option. I'm going to give you an option, okay? You got one of two choices. Either you take the August 11th date or we'll vote to deny the application right now. You got one of two choices. Either you take the August eleventh date or we'll vote to deny the application right now. Which would you like it to be?
August eleven?
August eleven.
Oh, that's not bad. I thought you said. Okay.
You get, if you get approval on August eleven, this will not be memorialized until our next meeting, which is the first meeting in September. I just want you to be fully aware of that. You will not be able to do any work if this is approved on August eleven, okay? Motion to carry this case to August eleven without further notice and with whatever extensions are required. Nora will follow up, make sure we get the extensions they have verbally approved, verbally agreed to that.
Don't move Snyder.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Want to ask one more time, what, uh, what can we do to change again the plan? What are we looking at right now?
I think you talked about two things primarily, the elimination of the patio and, and a significant reduction to that front driveway. Because you have almost fifty percent impervious. I know this for it, I, I can see on people's faces, they're not enamored with a fifty percent impervious coverage. You don't need that many parking spaces.
Sure, yeah, no, it makes sense.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Normally a house has two car garage, two spaces in the driveway, that's a total of four. That's a normal house.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a flag a lot though.
So? Does that change it, Bernie?
This is a different way of approaching it, from my standpoint.
Are you saying, look, uh. Look, we've got a very busy agenda tonight. I don't want to discuss this anymore. We've already moved the motion to move it to August eleven.
Any other option?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, next motion, uh, next case, please.
Okay, let's call the next case. If I can find my paperwork. Case number nineteen sixty-six, G T P acquisitions. The applicant here. Mr. Vogel, can you hear me? You're unmuted.
Yeah, unmute, please. You're still muted, Mr. Vogel. Unmute, please. There you go. We can hear you now.
Okay. Thank you. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, just make a brief introductory statement and we'll, uh, launch into my witness. Just to reorient everyone at the board very briefly, on, on the occasion of, uh, the last hearing. Uh, we introduced one witness, Mr. David Weiner, who acquainted you with, uh. Uh, the, the property and the nature of the application. Uh, essentially, this is on property which is part of Saint Christopher's Church. Uh, the proposal is for a hundred and fifty-six units. That is fifty apartments of assisted living and independent living. Fifty cottages of independent and assisted living and fifty-six memory care, uh, facilities. Um, this is, uh, uh, this facility, uh, sits behind Saint Christopher's Church. And it is, uh, in inherently beneficial use. Uh, I have a witness, uh, as we indicated at the last hearing, uh, Mr. Les Stretch. Who will testify as to the operations and the amenities, uh, that are provided with respect to the site. And, uh, as I see, Mr. Chairman, I believe you have, you do have seven members present. And unless there is a question of me, I will call Mr. Stretch.
Uh, Mr. Stretch, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear and or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is choose to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And Mr. Vogel, he's just going to be giving factual testimony. He's not an expert and you're not claiming him to be an expert, correct?
Well, he's a, he's a combination. He is a, uh, he is a fact expert, but he is, uh. He is an expert with respect to the operations of facilities such as the subject matter of this application.
And what is his expertise in, and how does he get?
His expert.
As an expert.
Through the management and operation of facilities that include assisted living, independent living and memory care.
Mr. Stretch, uh. What, what is your, um, education?
Uh, my background, I'm, I'm president of Thrive Senior Living, and so, um, that's the, the role that I play, so.
How long have you been, uh, the, uh, president of Thrive?
Uh, four years.
And how long has Thrive been in business?
Uh, a little over a decade.
And you were only involved with Thrive for the last four years?
I was in a consulting capacity for two years prior, uh, before I came on to give leadership of the company.
Okay, and prior to that, what kind of, uh, work did you do or who were you employed by?
Yeah, I was the, uh, uh, chief operating officer of a, 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 a different, uh, senior living company.
And what's your education? Do you have a master's degree or any, um, certifications, any licenses in, um, uh, certain care facilities?
Uh, uh, formal education, uh, Baylor, Baylor University in Texas undergrad, uh, if the finance, uh, focus. And then, um, been working in the healthcare capacity for a little over seven years.
Mr. Vogel, I, if you want to try to qualify, I, I don't know that that's necessarily an expert in that field. He doesn't have any formal education in that. He's got limited, um, years with Thrive, only four. And he was more financial than a, um, I think a healthcare.
And I gave a global leadership to Thrive's operations, so I don't, uh, uh, again, the clinical side, we have people on our team that give leadership to that. And happy to defer to them, but as far as global operations, uh, I give day-to-day leadership to that.
Well, have you ever been qualified as an expert in any court and any, before any board in New Jersey or any other states in the United States?
No, sir.
Again, Mr. Vogel, I, I, I just questioned his, um, him being qualified as an expert.
Well, you may question it. I've submitted it and I'll have the witness testify.
And, and the board will give due deference to the, to the fact that I really don't think he is an expert.
Mr. King.
Yeah, you, you've reached a conclusion. You haven't even heard his testimony.
And I know, what I've done is I've heard his background, his, um, his, his history in the business and I, I just. And I'll give you the opportunity to try to qualify, but I don't think you can.
I don't have to.
Well, I have to proceed with the witness, uh, Mr. Vogel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Stretch, would you identify, um. Uh, what your employment is with whom and the nature of that employment?
Um, I'm the president of Thrive, uh, Senior Living. We have, uh, just under a thousand team members, um, in eight states that we operate currently. And so, uh, were, were there other specifications that you asked for, Jerry?
Well, to describe to the board the business of Thrive, tell us how many units, the kinds of units and what the business is of Thrive.
Yeah, um, and I, if it's okay, I may take liberty and just expand that question to give more, more perspective. Um, uh, appreciate you guys letting me, uh, give, give testimony tonight and may, may make sense to give, uh, some background on Thrive, uh, which I'll do. And then, um, just the parsony, the site, and then kind of exactly why the building, uh, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay to, to speak to that.
Would you describe Thrive? Tell, tell the board.
Sure, yeah, Thrive, Thrive just, uh, celebrated, um, a decade of growth. Uh, during that time, we've, we've built, uh, thirty-two senior living communities from the ground up. So about, about three, four, uh, senior, senior living communities per year. Uh, we're privately held, um, owner-operator, and we built in, in ten states. So we, we've never built the same, um, community twice. Uh, we, we've done that in an attempt to honor the local architecture and kind of community in our design, so. Um, uh, we, we operate independent living, uh, senior living, uh, independent living, assisted living and, and memory care communities. Uh, in the states that we built.
And describe to the board, uh, what you, uh, what a senior, uh, facility such as this. The difference, uh, different types of residents that you have as opposed, um, assisted living, independent living and memory care.
Yeah, happy to do that. So, um, just speaking to senior living communities, they, they've come a long way, uh, but if you ask most. Uh, if you ask most Americans if they desire to live there one day, they'd say no. Um, you, you most often find, uh, buildings where the, the, the residents move in only when they have to. And, and the team goes to, to work just to get a paycheck and so. Um, I, I'm kind of giving you insight into the, the background of why we got into the business. I think it helps give perspective to the project, so. Um, you, most often you find teams that come to work to collect, like I said, a paycheck, watching the clock tick down. And residents are kind of watching, uh, the clock tick down their lives, so that's really the heart of why we got into the senior living, uh, building. And, and, uh, most of them were built with a hospital in mind rather than a home. So, uh, our team decided to do something about that and about, about ten years ago, we were one of the first to put in, in campus-wide Wi-Fi. Because we believed in the, uh, uh, abilities of, of older adults to learn new things. Um, we're one of the first to use RFID, uh, door access for security and technology in apartments. Uh, just fill the buildings with natural light and other things, uh, become more commonplace o- over the last decade, so. Um, we, we kind of moved strategically from the southeast up to the mid, mid-Atlantic and then moved into New Jersey, uh, about two, two years ago. So, um, one of the points, uh, on, on our, the testimony this, uh, about a month ago. What was just why we focused on, on parsony and, um, a- at first there was a, a demonstrated need, um, for options for aging adults. Uh, in, in the, over the decade to come and, um, we, we really made, uh, made a stay was the people. Um, y'all have good food there too. Um, but, uh, why, why we, why we love the city once solidified it was a lot, the specific site. Um, and, uh, just for perspective on, on data and, and logic. Um, it showed that as people age and slow down, they tend to seclude. Um, and, um, at, at times often battle loneliness. So for this specific site, this, this is usually the, the results, uh, reason they're battling loneliness is because kids. Um, coming around less frequently and they become less mobile. And as they slow down, it becomes more difficult to get out of the house. So that, that loneliness many of us, uh, really experienced this last year through COVID and the pandemic. Cause as we were all restricted into our residence and, um, just unable to live normal. And so, you know, our, our desire here is to build communities that allow older adults to live a normal life with great care. And help accessible, uh, if and when they need it. So, um, we, we do two things to create that, uh, and I think this will give good perspective on the site. But one is select sites that are in the normal travel of the larger community. And then two is design our, our buildings in, in a way that feel like home. So, so that any of us that are on this call would want to, to live there. Um, so, uh, over and over, uh, it, it's shown, um, the data would support to create better outcomes for residents. Uh, we're, we're looking forward to doing that for the families of, of Parsony if, um, if the board would allow. So, uh, in, in fact, we recently, uh, you know, received helpful feedback from the community. I think this was referenced on the last, uh, call. Uh, or last hearing, uh, a, a little over a year ago, and so we met with a group of neighbors there at Saint Christopher's and. They showed some pretty strong convictions about a couple of points. One of those was for a variety of reasons. They didn't want access from Rita Drive. So we, we listened and we removed that. And, um, you know, this group deems it appropriate for us to advance the project. Uh, we, we plan to meet with the community again and allow them to have, um, just a voice and, and the final product is deliver as far as the amenity stack. Next, we have a variety depending on the project, so, uh, just specifically, Jerry, to your question, what will we build? Um, uh, we, we knew for certain, we didn't want to build a big square building that creates hallway living for the rest of your life. That's, that's typical in senior living projects that you just circulate inside of hallways. Uh, if everyone on this call, our, our whole life, we've had, um, uh, options. So, w- w- if you look at the plans that we submitted, the site plan, um, we'll offer Parsony older adults, um, three options to live. And, um, we wanted residents to be proud of where they live and the local community to be proud of what's built. And so you'll have the ability, you can conveniently interact with old friends and then continue to make, make new ones. So I'll quickly reference those three living environments Jerry were asking about. Um, if, if you look at the site plan, uh, senior living option one, uh, you'll see in, in the plans are the walkable cottages. So that the target residence, uh, typical for that are usual residents that vary in age between late sixties and late nineties. Um, a- average age is around seventy-five and each of those are around kind of nine hundred to twelve hundred square foot cottages. And, uh, we oriented the development purposely to allow people to move in quickly. And, and quickly make friends with their new, new neighbors, so. And we were careful to place the, those, uh, cottages. Um, in, in a way that blends in with the homes from, from Rita, uh, off of Rita Drive. So, uh, we'll have, uh, golf carts, um, just two little kind of people movers as a convenience. Um, they'll kind of quietly m- move residents that have a little harder time getting around because of the slope of the property. Back up to the, to the main building whenever they would need, so that's senior, that's the option number one. And, and then if you were to look at that same site plan that we submitted, um, the option number two, you'll see in the plans, allow residents that are less mobile. Uh, to still live in the community as, as Mr. Vogel referenced, so. Uh, it, those are more upscale apartments in that main building. And, um, th- these, uh, these residents will only have to travel a short distance down a hallway to an elevator. To be right in the middle of life and relationships. So our, our usual, um, resident age for that varies, uh, usually early eighties to late nineties. And so the average age, uh, in our communities are around eighty-four and a half, and that's, that's typical for the senior living industry for that living type. And then the, the last one that you'd see referenced on the plans there, uh, senior living option three, uh, you'll see as, as eight small houses for seven residents. So, um, th- those houses are constructed in pairs, a- as you see on the plan. Uh, if you were looking at the, the site plan, Plan West, uh, left side of the page. Uh, and this area, uh, is for Parsony families with loved ones with a dementia, like Alzheimer's or other changing cognitive ability. So, um, and just speaking from a heart level, memory care in America has been a sad excuse for, for many, many years. It's kind of a place where warehousing older adults and, um, residents often move into a building and they never see the outdoors again. Um, i- if you pair that fact with the fact that memory care communities were hit worst in the recent, uh, worldwide pandemic. Um, residents living in memory care who lived in forty and fifty, sixty people in those hallway circulations, they were, uh, across the board. Data, data verifies, spread rampantly, uh, as residents in that concrete setting couldn't remember to stay separate and wear masks. And, and operators had no barriers, um, barriers to keep the residents separated. So, uh, we're, we're really, really proud, um, to bring, uh, to Parsony if you guys a- allow. A, a COVID and, and virus friendly, more normal design that really set Parsony as the, the standard of excellence in America for memory care. Uh, and I'll just briefly describe the difference because it'll help orient if you haven't spent time in, in a dementia care environment. Uh, we, we created these burden light housing units and they're, so they're single-story wood frame constructed buildings that are code and regulatory compliant. But each of those houses that you'd see back there were the, you know, fifty-six residents living with changing, uh, cognitive abilities. Um, full kitchen in each one of those, uh, living units, normal living environment, a private back porch. Uh, free access, um, to walk in and out of a mains, because we secured, um, that, uh, yeah. Little, little village back there rather than securing the, the building to allow them freedom to move and choice. So e- each home is supported by a dedicated dementia care trained team. So if you guys were to Google, uh, or look up, uh, m- most, uh, education articles around memory care. The most progressive environments are, are this small house concept, which has been, uh, the heart of all of our development, so. Um, fifty-six memory care residents in this development and the eight homes of seven residents will have kind of the dignity of living in a very normal environment. Where their families feel safe, so, um, that, that's, that's the living, and then the kind of target demographic. I can speak to the amenities if, if you'd want, or we can reference that later.
Um, can you, uh, describe to the board the interaction between, uh, uh, the. Um, assist, the, uh, independent living and the assisted living units. Uh, and how the, uh, the, uh, the residents may, uh, transfer from one to the other as need. Uh, becomes available.
Yeah, um, so if I understand the question, just how, how do the different areas of the development interact? Is that the question, Jerry, uh, Mr. Vogel?
Yeah, it, well, if someone comes. Yeah, it, well, if someone comes in for an independent living and then becomes neatly and with respect to assisted living, how are they able to move from one category to the other?
Yeah, great, great question. And so, you know, the target is to build, allow older adults as they age to age in place. It's shown to have better life outcomes. And so if someone were to move in into a, one of the cottage cottages that are up, they would have choice for their own lives. They can engage just like any of us on this call could engage a home health service or, you know, outside physical therapy to, to individually, just like they would at their normal residence. If they desire and the needs of their health would advance them to, to need more help with the activities of daily living, which are called ADLs. They, they could by their own choice move into assisted living and actually begin to receive the, the care model that we offer. And that's offered twenty four hour nursing care and comes with everyone that lives in the apartments or the, the memory care area.
In that regard, would you describe to the board the, the amenities that are available within the facilities?
Sure. Variety of options that are scheduled now. I think first and foremost, just from a resident safety and care standpoint, there's twenty four hour nursing care that's delivered on a scheduled and an as needed basis as needs would arise. There's, there's a main chef driven menu restaurant. The residents will have options that change from day to day and meal to meal. There's a kind of a craft coffee shop and gelato ice cream experience that's in a little separate building there. And again, the, the purpose of that old school senior living was really more congregate dining base and doesn't feel normal. And so the, the movement is, as boomers are beginning to get older, their life, they've had a lot of choices and our, our heart is to create more choices in the food that you eat. And so you've got an option to go eat breakfast over there. There's a gym that we refer to as athlete center. And we'll offer residents a variety of kind of group fitness classes if they want to, you know, work out or continue to strengthen muscles with friends, some private training and then some physical therapy. There's a barber shop that offers hot shaves for the gentleman and a beauty salon for those that want to keep their, their hair done weekly. There's some activity courts, kind of pickleball courts for more active residents. And that, those are a lot of times the folks using those are, are folks that live in the cottages. Car wash service, outdoor seating with heating overhead for some of the colder months. And, and then just a smart sweets. So a lot of, as folks are aging, they're picking up technology really well. So smart TVs and thermostats and lighting, just to make life convenient. But also for folks that it's harder to get around, it's easier to activate a lot of that stuff with voice to allow them, again, the freedom of choice and not have to ask for help so often. I think that, that kind of covers the, the, the large buckets of amenities.
And based upon the industry and your experience, the experience of Thrive, who are the residents that come to a facility such as this?
Yeah. So the residents that move in typically the folks that moving in into our, our independent living setting are folks that the industry term is right sizing their life, you know, tired of taking care of the yard, wanting to travel more. Grandkids are starting to get older. And, and so usually it's they'll sell their primary residence and then move into independent living just to create more flexibility in their life. Don't take care of their yard. All the stuff and clutter that's kind of becoming cumbersome. That's kind of the avatar that we see moving into independent living. Assisted living are folks that just, there's a schedule of activities of daily living and that may be helping assistance with changing clothes, maybe helping assistance with medication management. Could be helping assistance with all the way up to, you know, showering and, and that type of thing. So it's, it's a small or large amount of help with activities of, of daily living. And frankly, it's folks that are moving in, a lot of times the, the children of that older adult are realizing they're, they're living lonely and separated from society. And so a lot of that, that point is how do I get back into living in community? We've got a heart and a belief that folks were made to live in community. And so that's, that's the picture of the resident that's moving into assisted living at times. And then on the, on the memory care side, you're going to see a low, medium and kind of a high acuity offering for that memory care structure. And, and so that's, that's someone that typically has a diagnosis. Industry wide, typically there's about seventy percent of folks living in assisted living have some form diagnosed form of dementia. And, and so when someone makes the decision to move in there, it's just full support, but it's also in a safe, secure environment. As families begin to wonder or worry about wondering and that type of thing. So the purpose of those small house concepts is allow a memory care residents, why it's proven over and over again to provide better life outcomes. Because it's less decisions to make, which raises dignity because you're not always having to ask for help and oftentimes the increasing of forgetfulness. So.
Now, would you advise, advise the board as to the nature and number of employees that are necessary to staff a facility such as this?
Yeah. So there's the regulatory requirements, which we will always meet or exceed. And then there's kind of typically our, our targets. So on, in a memory care environment, each of those homes has a dedicated team member that's there twenty four hours a day. And then there's a, a host of floaters that works on an as needed basis. As the needs of a resident that may arise, typically the memory care area needs a higher number of, of our team members that are there devoted to assist them in, in making their own choices. And then in the assisted living, typically the target, and again, it, it varies, the, the staffing model, we have an acute acuity matrix that determines the, the staffing for a number of residents that have moved into the building as we begin to lease up. So as the acuity increases, the number of people that are there dedicated each shift increases.
Have, would you describe to the board the attributes of this particular site? And how Thrive has reached the conclusion that this would be an appropriate location with respect to the proposed facility?
Yeah, I, I've found it's, I think I've found it's helpful to understand people by, by asking questions. So I'd, I'd humbly ask a rhetorical question. As you're just sitting here thinking about yourself, where would you want to live if you were eighty five years old? And on the edge of town, you know, warehoused next to self storage and office parks? Or would you want to live in the middle of the, the fabric of the community that you raised your kids and called home for all your life? So, you know, not just social science, it's just, just common sense. You, you would explain the, the most important reason as to why we picked this site and absolutely love it. This site's well suited because it, it's where people live. I've sat on the corner of Littleton and imagined the families that'll be able to conveniently interact with their loved ones and and not, not have to drive out to the office park or the edge of town to see them. We've, we've revisited different sites that are been available on the market. This has been an ongoing couple of year process within the last several months. And this continues to rise to the top. You know, grandkids can walk through the neighborhood off of Dolly Lane or Rita Drive to see their, their grandma and people fundamentally desire to live in community. And we've, we've all on this call lived in community our whole life. And the failure has been to build communities on the edge of town out of the way. Older adults for decades, like I said, have been stored on the edge like, like storage unit. And so it's honestly, it's sad. And the industry's missed the mark and we've got a real heart for this business. So that, that's why we found that the site is, is perfect for, for our intention.
Would you describe to the board in general terms, what the expectation is based upon other units? As to the traffic that would be generated, recognizing that you're not going to give numbers, but whether or not the the residents generate the, the same kind of traffic that one would expect from a traditional residential neighborhood?
I, I by no means can speak to traffic, being a traffic expert. All I can speak to is our, our history and the communities that we've opened. And so typically in assisted living, in memory care, we, we don't have resident, so those fifty six residents would not be using cars. So oftentimes they bring their car with them just because as a sense of pride and those get stored on site. So they'll be able to see it whenever they want. Again, instilling that sense of dignity. In the assisted living area, which is the next block of fifty units, typically what you'd see in there is, you know, five to ten percent of residents are, are driving or desire to drive. And oftentimes a lot of, they have their cars there to use. But most oftentimes their, their loved ones are coming to pick them up. On the independent living side, and that varies from community to community. So out of those fifty units that are there, call it fifteen to twenty percent, and that's varying, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. It just depends on how close the local amenities are. Oftentimes they end up leaving with a friend. And so out of a hundred and fifty six units, call it twenty to twenty five of the residents, maybe thirty would, would have cars and then a portion of those using them. That's speaking from experience, not as, not as a expert.
Describe to the board, and you did touch on it earlier, the medical or pharmacological services that are available to the residents? And whether or not they can choose their own doctor, whether or not there, you have nurses on staff and, and the availability of both medical and pharmacy services for the residents?
Yeah, I'll just go down the acuity spectrums. I don't know how much exposure everyone on the call has had to, to senior living. And so you have active adult, which is kind of fifty five and up, more of lifestyle communities. And then right, right next to that is independent living, which is a lot more lifestyle and, and, and kind of right sizing your life. Next would be this assisted living. And again, that's someone that just needs just general, maybe help getting along, but sharper mentally than a lot of us on this call. And then there's, there's memory care, which needs an acuity really high. And then you have skilled nursing facilities. Thrive's background, we, we do not do anything in the active adult or anything in the skilled nursing environment. We focus on those middle three. That's, that's where we, we've had success. And so in regards to the clinical care, not being a clinician, but giving kind of oversight to global operations, we, we partner with local doctors and we, we are in the middle of, of opening a community in Montville, New Jersey. Just an hour or so, forty five minutes, depending on traffic. And, and we, we make partners with visiting physicians. And so the majority of their, their care is, is directed by and under the guidance of, of a local physician that their family interacts and they have freedom of choice to choose. Doctors actually enjoy the process of coming into our communities and building relationships there because they're able to see multiple patients or residents at a time. And so they give direction. And so monthly and specifically quarterly, we sit down with families to update the care plan for each resident. And keep in mind, independent living residents don't have care plans. They, they're really coming in for a lifestyle decision. I'm mainly speaking about memory care and assisted living residents. So our community, we, we have, like I said, nursing twenty four hours, it's available, it's under our employ under the direction of a local physician. And and then we have a, a care team that's built up out of that. We, we select people to join our team only that have some base level certification, which is a CNA certified nursing assistant or CMA, which is a certified medical assistant.
I believe I've covered all the aspects that I desired. Is there anything that you would like to add, Mr. Stretch, to what you've already testified to? If not, we'll open it to questioning from the board.
Mr. Chair?
If I may, if I may, I think there was a question on the last call about schools and us sitting adjacent to the, the high school. And I, I have had exposure. I think the question that was asked on that last call was what, what in your experience has been the interaction there? And so, so we, we have built next to schools before. Typically, the interaction is whatever the community desires. And so I can only speak from experience and don't know what would happen in this specific site. But the, the interaction is very collegial and intentional, often from both sides. Whether it's internship opportunities, folks desiring to build a career in social work or nursing, it provides opportunity for them to come interact and create intergenerational moments. It's been very, very successful with sports teams looking at ways to go volunteer, like the baseball or track team or something like that. That's what we've experienced in the past, built across the street from junior highs. And, and again, those are usually scheduled visits. So it's, it's gone very well and appreciated a collegial relationship. So I think that's the only thing from the last call that I could have spoke directly to that maybe got skipped over.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I submit the witness to any questions that you may have.
Any questions by the board?
Just follow up on the last comment, Mr. Chairman. The collegial thing with the kids. I guess the high school right around the corner, we have a very involved community there. And I think they would be very incorporate, but your last witness didn't really give us a whole lot of good examples of how that worked. Okay? And I'm like your testimony, could you tell us a little bit more about how you might interact with our school around the corner there and get the kids involved to help the senior citizens there?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the question and happy to go, go further. And I'll, I'll speak from experience. It is that it really just starts out with meeting the, the local high school. And, and again, we, we live in a different world right now, coming post COVID. And so there's, there's heightened sensitivities and we want to be careful to continue to honor those as people are processing what the world just went through. But, you know, the opportunities to interact is think about ourselves. You don't want to move to a place where you're sitting around people that are nearing the end of their life. You, you get a vibrance when you're around the energy that comes with youth. And so again, the, the normal path, traffic patterns, this, this area, this piece of land, it's in the normal traffic patterns of the people. So the way we've had them interact in the past, we've had students that have come over that love art, that are involved in art and photography. They end up opening up a group of residents. As residents move in, we do what we call a frame, which is just a life history of their family history, the residences, the accomplishments that our residents are proud of. Memories that kind of, they would say mark their life and then their formal education. As we get that profile of each one of our residents, as we have volunteers come over, what we do is a pairing of passions. What we found is some people come and volunteer because they're a part of a boy scout troop and they're looking for hours. Other people come volunteer because they're, they're actually want to give back to society. And so as we have volunteers come in, we do that same pairing of passions for them and say, what are the things that make your heart come alive? We'll get photography, we'll get woodworking, we'll get music. There's all kinds of things. And so as we have those resident profiles, what we do is we just offer the interaction. And just like in normal life, you can't force relationship. But what we found is if we pair people that already enjoy things, friendships start developing. And some of the coolest moments you have is, and this is even happening in my own home. We have a seventy eight year old neighbor that lives four, four houses down and my twelve year old son plays travel baseball. That same interaction, because he's been interacting as we've gone and helped our seventy year old neighbor. He calls Mrs. Cooper one of his friends now. It's not just the old lady down the street, which is what she was before we came to know her. And so as we start to pair those passions, what ends up happening is volunteers end up developing friendships. And it's just a natural occurrence that that community becomes a part of the larger community rather than the old folks home. And so that's again, the, the reputation that we're trying to build by these progressive offerings. So Mr. William, did I answer your question?
More than adequately. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions by the board?
I have some questions. You said you done another communities that are similar to this one, but they're all different. Have you, have you know the communities are approximately the same size?
Yes, sir. We have one, our largest community is, is about five to eight percent larger than this one. It's two hundred and twenty three units and it's three separate buildings that's built on a campus. That's called the Social at Savannah down in Savannah, Georgia. And so it's a little bit larger and that's the majority independent living. The, the physical structure is different. It's three separate buildings on a, on a campus. We didn't build that one from the ground up. We just were asked to come in and operate it because of the operational thesis that we, I've kind of given an overview of already. And so we, we started out ten years ago, really focused on a single story wood frame construction. And, and what we found is we have the ability to, to scale more offerings as we increase and also offer better wages to our people. So you don't have that transient So you don't have that transient in and out employee population. So our projects over time, over the last decade, have have incrementally increased. We've continued to grow and and learn how to operate with excellence. And so just like when new schools open up, they open up with kindergarten and then the next year they add first grade. We kind of did the exact same thing with our business. And so started out making sixty to seventy unit communities and then spent kind of two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, kind of in the hundred to one hundred and twenty five unit range. And then now I've been operating more of the one hundred and fifty to two hundred. And frankly, we feel that's really where our sweet spot is. If you get much bigger than that, most of the industry data would point to say that you you really have a hard time knowing your residents as individuals. They kind of become, you know, known by their their room numbers, which we just that's missing the mark for us.
You said you had a development in Montville?
Yes, sir.
How big is that?
It's two hundred and three apartments. It's currently under construction, projected to open February of this coming year.
And the the one in Savannah says about two hundred?
Yes, sir, we actually have two. We have one that just opened a few months ago. It's a hundred independent living apartments, thirty thirty eight assisted living apartments and then twelve memory care. So it's majority independent living kind of lifestyle community. That's it's called Thrive on Skidaway. It's on the island just off of the the shore of Savannah. So we have two off Savannah.
How many employees do they have?
It's a good question. And so the the, let me give it more perspective. And so the the number of team members always will ramp up according to the number of residents. And so I can speak to what we we operate with today. And so today, we're we're about just heading towards fifty percent occupancy of that one hundred. The one hundred and fifty units in the new opening. And so at fifty percent occupancy, we typically have three shifts per day. And so depending on and when we're near a school, we usually offset the the shift change when when school is not coming and going. And so that's how we've done it in the past. But for most of our communities, it's six to two, two to ten, ten to ten to six. And so on a community that size, when it's fully occupied, you probably have twenty to five plus or minus that are entering or exiting during those thirty minute windows. So the total number of community of of team members, they're they're never all there at the same time. So trying to be as clear as I can with my answer.
Could you, hold on, could you give us a price, an indication of the price range or cost for the facilities that our residents are going to be facing?
Yeah, so our our community is private pay. So also take long term care insurance. We have a portion of this this specific community in Parsippany that's dedicated to affordable units. And we know that's a local requirement and we're aware of that and are going to accommodate and meet the requirements that are they're asked of us. And so we have our affordable units and then kind of the market rate for independent living. They'll start in the first somewhere. And again, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but somewhere around five thousand. And then the the largest apartments, actually, it's the the memory care offering will go up into the eights and nine thousand dollars a month.
I don't have any other questions right now.
Thank you, Mr. Berkowitz. Any other questions by the board?
I I do, and I'm going to springboard off Mr. Berkowitz. So in regards to the monthly payments and the affordable units that you just addressed, what happens when a resident doesn't pay? What 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 does that process look like?
Yeah, that's, you, Ms. Snyder, were you asking if they don't pay because they can't or they're they just, is that what you're asking?
That's exactly what I'm asking. What does that process look like?
Yeah, honestly, those are those are tough, tough conversations. And it happens for a variety of reasons. One of the things you pick up in this industry real quickly is you see the best and the worst side of humanity. So in some instances, they can't pay because the kids are squabbling over inheritance, which is it's just really, really hard on the team. And so we we equip our team to help navigate that with the family. In other instances, they're in the situation where they're actually don't have funds. And so in in those instances, if affordable units are available, we help transition those. We purposely don't put our affordable units in one designated area because it becomes known as where kind of the poor people. We kind of purposely spread them throughout so you're not known by your income level, trying to honor each of the residents. So to answer your question.
Actually, you're not answering my question, so I'm going to be a little bit more poignant. What does the process look like? I know it's a sad situation. Nobody ever wants to find their family member there. Everybody's been through some type of probate fashion. My question is very plain. If a resident does not make payments, regardless of affordable units or not, what does that process look like from a logistical perspective? What what's the process?
Our community relations director or our community president will sit down with the family. They try to help them, they go through a budgeting spreadsheet to help to see if there's any way that they can find a way to personally pay. If they can't, what we do is even right now in our Montville community, a year before, we make friendships and relationships with the surrounding senior living communities that are offered at different price points. And so if they truly don't have a way to find a way to stay within our community, then we help find one that have great care ratings, marks and people and team members that we've gotten. Make those options available. Also, and again, that's assuming we vetted everything that's available within our own community. So it's assuming affordable units are available within ours. Second, there's no way that we've been able to help. And oftentimes, we walk them through that budgeting sheet and they're able to figure out a way. Because there were expenses that were going out that they didn't know that mom was still paying. So after we've exhausted all those options, the very last option is to make sure that we make introductions to teams at other neighboring friendly communities that kind of operate under the same care models.
Okay, and so have you ever in any of your projects had to evict forcibly evict somebody? And and if you can, kind of tandem with the answer, what time span do you talk, does this encompass in regards to, you know, going through all the exhaustive measures? And trying to make sure that the resident does stay placed to the time that you have to come to that decision and trans, you know, transfer that that resident someplace else? Or and or and or evict?
Have we had to evict a resident before? We have. And so just to speak very clearly to your question, I'm high on the charts of empathy. And so you're bringing back specific instances. It's not, it's it's horrible. And and again, because we we have to get in the middle and frankly, we build relationships. These are friendships with these residents. And so what does the process look like? It's as exhaustive as it can. We we sit in a meeting room. Each community has about their seven dedicated leadership roles. So they would meet as a team, make sure that all of options have been exhausted. And from there, once that's done, we we move forward with asking them. Honestly, it doesn't happen very often because most of the families are appreciative of the help to deliver options rather than kind of a no room at the end moment. And that does that happen in the industry? Absolutely. But part of it's looking at your competitors, not as competitors, but as just other offerings and making sure that you're vetting their care models. So the eviction process, I can't give specific resident timeline. We take as long as we can before that moment comes. That's the best way I can answer it.
Has any of your eviction processes involved response from first responders particularly police?
Could you ask that question in a different way? Have any of our?
I don't know how else to ask it. Have you ever?
What's the point of the question, Mrs. Snyder?
I'm asking it. I don't I don't think I need a point. It's a legitimate question. I'm just asking, okay? And I'll continue with other questions, Mr. Williams. I along with you represent the Parsippany residents. Can you answer the question, sir? I'm sorry.
Have any of our residents ever been?
No, I'm just saying, we're talking about the eviction process and and thank you for your guidance on this. And I'm just asking you.
Schneider. Can you rephrase the question because I don't understand what you're asking?
I'm just saying, has, when you have to transfer a residence or that you go undergo an eviction process to? He's got lots of projects all around the country. I'm just saying, do you ever have to engage the assistance of police in regards to?
Objection.
All right, but that's okay. I got a lot more questions, sir. I'm just asking.
Well, I object to the question. I'll direct the witness, not the answer.
Okay, well, then I'll move on to the next one. In your testimony, you stated that the number of team members will ramp up. These are your words, the number of team members will ramp up with the number of residents. So I I'm just, is it possible that this proposed unit will see an increase in staff commensurate with potentially more residents than than what's being proposed in this application?
Let me repeat your question back just to make sure I'm answering what you're saying.
So in your testimony, you were referring to the in and out of the population of your residents. And then you you went into the number of team members will ramp up with the number of residents. My question is, is that is there a potential for this particular proposed application to realize a ramp up of your employee, staff, team members? Yeah. Commensurate to if you decide to ramp up on residents in at this facility, proposed facility?
I think I understand your question now. And so right now, what we know is we'll have at a hundred percent occupancy, one hundred and fifty six options for living, some of those are obviously two bedrooms. And so we already have mapped out based on our experience through, you know, forty different communities that we've operated. Exactly the number of team members that we need at each of those phases. So, you know, we're able to project exactly what we need at six residents and then forty residents and then ninety residents and then one hundred and fifty six residents. So there there is no, you know, wondering and like playing it by ear. We have a base level of what we know and then they're always monitoring, for whatever reason, sometimes some communities acuity increases quickly. And sometimes it it doesn't. And so we have our kind of baseline, the variance is maybe five percent from what our base case is all the way up through one hundred and fifty six units. Does that, does that answer your question?
So I guess what I'm, yeah, I I think it does, but I want to clarify. So what you're saying is that the staff could increase or decrease by a variation of five percent, depending on how many residents you take in or don't take in, correct? Is that is that what I'm getting?
Yeah, and and so to to use an example of five percent. So if we're targeting with a specific number of residents that each shift, there needs to be twenty five team members. If for whatever reason, as we walk through our process for measuring acuity, we may say, you know, acuity is higher in this area of the community. So we would add about five percent, one to one and a half additional team members based on on need. And so we're not talking about large numbers. I don't know the the reason behind the question, so I'm doing my my best to answer it directly.
That's fine. Okay, and then so in your earlier testimony, you stated, you know, why Parsippany? And you said that there was a demonstrated need, there was a demonstrated need, a clear demonstrated need. And I'm asking what data or analytics or research has, or surveying for that matter, has solidified the determined need for this particular facility at this particular location?
Yeah. Appreciate the the questions. All without repeating what what we already said, the data that we use typically is is a measurement called unmet demand. And without having my my investment team that are on on that, they they go and and look at the market to say, we don't want to bring something that's not needed here. And frankly, it would be a very expensive, bad decision on our part to do that. And so that that measurement that we'll typically look at, we do the best that we can with all the variables is is a measured unmet demand. And so if, let's say, a community or a market demonstrates a need of, based on age and and population, an addition of, it could bear five hundred additional apartments or five shows over the next five to ten years of five hundred units of need. We're always making sure that there's at least three times more than what we're wanting to put in. And usually, it's it's more than that. And so we wanted to show and Parsippany showed a measurable unmet demand that exceeded that.
A lot of your test, yeah, thank you. A lot of your testimony was predicated over the assumption that many of these residents were going to be Parsippany residents. That's what that's what I picked up. It seemed like your expert testimony was heavily reliant on that. But your facility is really going to derive residents from all over the state. This is not going to be focused on just Parsippany seniors who want to be close to their families. Am I getting that correct?
I'm not sure what I said that would have indicated that. So our focus of this is that the residents, definitely, we we do not have communities where people have moved from across the country or across the state to come join. So over ninety percent of our residents usually come from within a five to ten mile radius radius of that community. Again, going back to the points that I made early, the the life and relationships in community that someone grew up in, they typically want to remain in. And so when we do have people that move from somewhere else in the state or across the country, it's usually an older child that's deciding that they want their mother or father to come live near them.
Because you did not provide that ninety percent statistic in your testimony.
Again, that's going to vary from market to market. Again, that's kind of an industry data point. But for for our experience has been the majority of the residents are are coming from that five to ten mile radius.
And I and I understand your lawyer and and your attestation in regards to the fact that the proposed application is inherently beneficial. But with all due respect, I'm going to say I, and and maybe I can ask Mr. Chadwick. Are residents who are sick of taking care of their lawns and experiencing empty nest syndrome inherently beneficial? That was part of your testimony. And I don't mean to be cheeky about that. I'm I'm asking sincerely.
I, in all deference, Ms. Snyder, I started at the beginning of the first hearing to go through what the what the courts have determined to be an inherently beneficial use. And I was stopped by the chairman indicating that I, or doesn't need a primer and doesn't need to be lectured by me as to what inherently beneficial use is. And quite frankly, your question with respect to the cutting of the grass is irrelevant to an inherently beneficial.
Actually, sir, sir, it's not my question. I'm listening to your experts testimony, so I.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Vogel. I told you to let your witness testify about inherently beneficial use, okay? And I said, we do not need a lecture from an attorney. We need testimony from a planner, an engineer, an architect, okay? Most definitely, you can put on the record and inherently beneficial use, not you, your planner.
Ms. Snyder. Ms. Snyder, is it, I don't know proceedings. Could I offer additional response to that or?
Absolutely, I might, yeah, I would love it.
Okay. I I think as you kind of interact with older adults, eighties, seventy, again, my in-laws are seventies and and super active. But it people age in differently. And honestly, there there's an awareness that comes where you're just like, man, it's it's just, I'm getting to a point where it's difficult to navigate the the house. And so when I say right right sizing their life, oftentimes, the the urging and the prompting is from the the children of that older adult to say, Mom, it's it's time to move to a place. And so again, there's a stigma around senior living in America that's well documented as old folks home places on the edge of town. And so when I say right sizing your life, moving into those cottages, the the push along the way oftentimes is is from loving kids speaking to their parents saying, Mom, you're not able to do it or I can't come over on the weekends. And so I don't know if that additional color helps shape the situation about what the driving motivation to make the move is.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
Yes, this is Casey Parek. Questions? First of all, how many other places you have a facility, the residence, you know, apartments, three story or more?
Mr. Parek, you you broke up. I couldn't hear what you said. I apologize.
How many buildings, these facilities and around the country, you have three stories or more? In how many buildings?
I I don't know that number off the top of our head. I'd have to talk to our our team. I could go through and count. Approximately say half, now half to three quarters of our communities have a portion of the the buildings are at least three stories. We've built up to four on multiple occasions. And so if you were to ask me. if you were to ask me the last ten that we've built, I believe all of them have a portion that are at least three stories.
And the question I have is is there any age restrictions or anything for independent living?
Yeah, usually there's local regulations that kind of mandate we, and that's fifty five or sixty five are our minimum age requirements. And so typically people are wanting to move in with people at the same stage of life. And that's why I tried to at the beginning, give those age bands for each each one of those. And so our average age in our communities right now that are independent living centric are around late seventies, early eighties.
The last question I have is about the visitors. Do they normally come on weekends, Saturdays, Sundays? Is there any particular time you see more visitors than weekdays?
Are you talking about number of visitors or frequency in the question?
Number of visitors.
Okay, yeah. I mean, if you think about it, at your home right now, how often it's mirrored very well in these communities. And so oftentimes when people move in and they see, you know, they're proud of where they live. And so just like you'd invite a friend over, they would invite a friend over. And so there's there's some residents, unfortunately, that don't don't ever have visitors. And then there's, you know, a resident that was one of the most popular people in the local community. And so it it really varies by whether someone lived their life secluded or or they spent their life as a social butterfly. So.
And do you see more visitors on weekends than weekdays?
Are there more visitors? There's not really a day of the week. A lot of times we'll host family gatherings. And so obviously holidays, when people are back together, you see a spike during that time. And yeah, there's, there's not, there's not a consistent peak volume. There's not enough variation that would be noted. And so a lot of it is when we have events for families to come interact with their loved one, that's when traffic gets highest.
Okay, all right, thanks. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If nobody else on the board has a question, I have a one more question I did forget to ask.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Where's the security in place around the storage of your, the voluminous pharmacological, you know, items that you you'll be storing on that proposed site? Can you talk about the security?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's important. I'll speak in regards to narcotics always are kept under double lock, and that's by kind of nationwide regulations. And so we, this community has each residence medications. Med errors are an issue within the industry as typically historically there in med closets with carts that get pushed around the community. This community has each residence medication to make sure that it stays with that resident in a locked environment in their room. And so we're able to secure that and make sure that there, it limits the possibility for interaction. It's under the oversight of the positions, the head nurse, we call it a vice president of resident experience. And so that's giving guidance. And then we have a dedicated medication management team that are CMAs, certified medical. And and each one of those typically has about thirty residents that they're in charge of passing medications for. And so I don't know how much depth you want to go and how they're transported or delivered.
Yeah. And to tell you the truth, well, I mean, yeah, we would like to learn more about that. But also, and I'm not sure if this is really in your realm or maybe an architect's realm in regards to these med closets and the infrastructure of the med closets and the walls that, you know, house these med closets. Are they constructed any differently than the walls in a more secure fashion than the walls, let's just say, of somebody's room?
Again, as far as finish and wall type, I wouldn't be the expert.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I didn't think so.
And if you want, the heart behind the question, the security, the actual narcotics?
The heart of the security is just if somebody wants to break in, I know, you know, a lot of pharmacy or a lot of facilities that inventory a lot of pharmacological items, you know, they have additional, I don't know.
Security measures.
Security, well, security. And then the infrastructure in the closet is a little bit more robust, let's just say, than you know, the walls of a of a room or a bathroom or a dining room or, you know, something like that.
Yeah. Each of the medication closets is under RFID lock. The only ones that have access to that are the people that have, so the entire team doesn't have access to that, just people that are giving oversight to the actual circulation of medications for each resident. So and then within that, in that medication closet, there's a dedicated narcotics area that's separate, under a separate lock and key, and there's an even smaller group of people who have access to that. So hopefully that, does that answer your question?
And yes, it does. But the delivery, the transport of, how's that handled?
Yeah, we partner with the local pharmacy. Omnicare is the, one of the largest national presence and have partnered with those in certain instances. If there's a great local pharmacy, we partner with them, but typically it's used a lot of the bigger shops. They're in charge and we follow the leading of them as giving oversight to the delivery and a disposal of all pharmacy items.
Okay, how's that, how's that, how's the ingress, what, talk me through the ingress egress of this stuff, right? Are there guards that escort these people, the pharmacists, to make sure that these end up in very secure locations? I mean, how do they walk in with all this?
Yeah, that's a highly regulated process. And even if we wanted to have a different way to do it, it's, you're going to see the same answer from operator to operator. And so the pharmacy is really giving leadership to coming in and delivering them and making sure there's direct sign off for what was delivered. Same thing with the disposal of any unused medications. Some of the medications are PRN, which are just prescribed and on an as needed basis, under the the recommendation of the doctor that's in charge. So those get disposed if in a certain amount of time, they're not used on an as needed basis.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chadwick, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I'll operate this mic. The licenses that you will need for this facility, have you begun the process?
We have to make sure, we kicked that off. We kind of have a timeline that we work through. And so we'll work through the licensing process once the projects actually, you guys deem it that it's appropriate for us to build there. So.
You haven't, you haven't had any contact with the state on those licenses?
So there's a group within our company that focuses on licensing. And and so what they do first is get a lay of the land and understand the licensing process. So as far as a company, we understand the licensing process. But to my knowledge, I'd have to ask the team if they've initiated conversations. It would be atypical at this point for any project that we've done. But I couldn't speak with certainty to whether they have or haven't reached out just to get a better understanding of it.
Well, each state has different licensing.
That's right.
And New Jersey has theirs. You're not the licensing person. So you really can't tell me whether you're going to have a license or multiple licenses at this set.
Yeah, the, so the assisted, the apartments, remember the three different living options, the apartments and the memory care will be licensed, certified and licensed areas of the of the community. But yeah, I would, I would reach out to our internal team to see. Our Montville community, we've got a much better understanding of New Jersey state level regulations. But there's also local that layer in on top of that.
The Montville community, that was basically you described it's independent living apartments. And there was memory care there?
Yes, there is. There's thirty, thirty two memory care units that are available at Montville. Was that your question?
Yeah, okay. Kind of an odd mix, meaning there's no in between.
Oh, so there's, there's, oh, sorry about that. There's independent living, there's a hundred independent living units at Montville. And then there's whatever the delta between one hundred and thirty two, my one hundred, one hundred and thirty two. So.
So there are assisted living.
Sixty nine, yeah, that's right. Sixty nine assisted living units. Yes, sir.
And then you go to the last.
Correct.
Do you know whether you license this under a, what they call a continuous community retirement?
Yeah, it's a great question. If you go back to what I asked, referenced in the beginning, as far as the senior living spectrum, you're referencing a CCRC, which is a continuing care retirement community. This isn't a continuing care retirement community because that goes all the way up to skilled nursing, which is the highest acuity mix possible, where they're doing rehab of residents that have had traumatic experiences. And so.
And you haven't moved to that?
We do not operate. We do not operate CRCs, CCRCs, we do not operate skilled nursing facilities.
No, okay.
Yes, sir.
So the licensing process hasn't begun?
Again, to be very clear.
And I understand why, is why licenses go through the process if you don't get approved?
Exactly. Yeah. And so to be clear, do we have a general awareness of New Jersey and an understanding of this local? Yes, our team does. We have a licensing team. And so we move forward with reaching out and expanding that as the project gets approved.
The affordable housing units that will be required by some of the licenses. Are you familiar with what the percentages are?
Yes, sir. I think Mr. Vogel has been, I think it's you that you guys have been had high level conversations, but when the project gets approved, we'll work out the number of units and meet all obligations it's expected of the of the planning board. So we built other projects and had the correct share asked of us. So.
Well, let me, let me tell you what the rule is in Parcipony. And so you.
Yeah, it's twenty, twenty percent and then ten percent by the state. So we, they're definitely aware of those. And so I apologize, I cut you off, so.
No, you jumped right to the point because the state requires ten percent.
That's right.
And it requires twenty percent as a court settlement. And the lawyers are going to have to discuss that.
If I can interject, Mr. Chairman, I usually hesitate to do so, but I'd like to raise two issues. One, with respect to the affordable housing, whatever the requirement of the law is, we have never had a problem on any units we've ever built. We meet the requirement and those requirements really relate to the state's requirements, municipal requirements based upon whatever, given municipalities fair share plan. And it's, it's, it's really not an issue for us because we understand what the obligation is and we will meet that obligation. If we have one hundred and fifty six beds, that is the basis upon which we then confront the issues. And we just, as I say, it's really not an issue to be concerned about because the law, we have to meet the law. It's the same with respect to getting licensure from the state. You could approve this, and if we don't license, we can't build it. By the way, and that's the other point I'd like to make for John, for Mr. Chadwick. The state will not, under my understanding, consider an application for a license unless you have a site plan that you can give to them. So all of the process, all of the projects that we've ever done, we always go through the zoning first and then take it to the state to get the license. It's that's the way the chicken and the egg operates in, in, in that scenario.
I agree with Mr. Vogel on a couple of the components of this. But other components, the state just issues the licenses. But in any event, I wanted to bring up the affordable housing aspect early on because we've had some applications where we discussed it at the third and fourth meeting. And I was castigated for not saying it earlier. I have not done that.
I can only say this, the way, the way I have always worked out is that in the event, hopefully that you would approve the application, you include in your resolution, a provision that we resolve the affordable housing issue with the appropriate representatives of the municipality. And we always sit down and we come to a number. And it's not, really not an issue.
I think we could be definitive on that if the board approves this application or some version there are. In terms of the memory care facilities, basically, in the revision process, you flipped this project. You had the system independent in the back and the everything else up in the front. And you flipped that, you know, what prompted that?
That's great, great observation. Couple things. One is slope. And so most of our memory care, slope of the, of the terrain, one of them was a definitive factor. Two is to create a ability for it to be more secure environment, kind of tucked away from the larger public, meaning secure environment. So it's level, honestly, I, you know, the homes that are on Dolly Lane and the homes that are on Rita Drive, having a continuation of that natural feel of residential moving more into kind of a larger building that's tucked away. All of that is we started moving pieces around to kind of honor the local. We felt really good about the way it's laid out now. So it was a confluence of factors. It wasn't one any determinant, or one final thing. And one other thing is, it's, we had, you know, a major point, as I'm remembering the conversation now. When we eliminated Rita Drive as a, you know, key access point to the community, as you look at the flow of traffic and fire and all of that, it just made more sense. That was an additional factor that played into our decision.
Do you provide, as you said, the car ownership there is really low and most cases they go out and sit in it, it's supposed to drive it. Do you plan to have any kind of bus or van or whatever service there is to go various locations, whether it's in the township or county? Is that a normal feature in your developments?
So what I hear you asking is, is do we provide transport kind of throughout the communities? Yes, is the answer. Comes in a variety of forms. I told you in our Montville community, we've had multiple focus groups. And those people have kind of taken ownership to speak into the project. At the end of the day, it's a win if the local residents were delivering what they want. And so in some communities, we have a larger bus that would hold probably twelve to fifteen people. And so imagine something that's a little bit bigger than a fifteen passenger van, but has wheelchair accessibility. So in some instances, we'll do something like that to go out to, you know, some communities that's been a local minor league baseball game or out to the mall or go shopping at certain times. So that's been used. In other instances, we've had a couple of town cars that are simply parked and we use those. We use those town cars to kind of provide private car, kind of concierge services. Some folks want to go out to a barber or a beautician that they've used before. It's basically a concierge service to take you wherever you want. You just schedule it.
Sizes, would you expect to have it or not?
You said the size of the community? Yes. Yeah, this community, yes, we would have those. Sorry.
I mean, you've upped the numbers as you've grown.
Yeah, yes, sir. So yes, they are scheduled for this community. I apologize. I didn't know if you were asking for the thrive wide or just the specific. So yes.
About emergency facilities, are you going to have your own ambulances or are you going to rely on the township?
No, we usually contract with the local EMR service. And, you know, again, if you went back to that senior living spectrum, we're kind of in the middle. And so with a hundred independent living units and the unit mix that's here, you should expect, I don't know, on average, one to two, maybe ambulances. You'd go a couple of weeks and not see one, and then maybe there'd be two and one. That's not usually something that would be a disruption that we've experienced in our history. So.
So you would contract as opposed to have an ambulance on site?
Yeah, we don't, we don't run an ambulance service. No.
So you would have a. So you would have a, a contract with somebody to do it, whether it's a local ambulance or.
That's right. Yeah. So to my, to my knowledge, senior living operators, I, I don't know of any that operate their own ambulance service. So it's, it's typical to use a contract.
The question of security was brought up. I mean, I, all the buildings of the memory care buildings, uh, they can't, population can't leave on their own, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's very specific regulations around how to, how to they operate. So there's elopement, uh, physical barriers for elopement. What was that?
I didn't say.
Somebody had their.
I'm sorry. I, I was on mute. Excuse me.
Oh, no, no problem. Um, so the question was about, uh, security in regards to the, um, our residents are living with changing cognitive abilities. And so the unique environment that you have there is residents have the freedom of choice. And so we, we've secured with physical barriers. Um, the kind of neighborhood of memory care communities, it's been proven through the greenhouse model. If you want to research that, that small house living provides better outcomes. And so we, we secured that little kind of neighborhood back there and, you know, call it, call it a micro neighborhood. Um, a- and then, and so, yeah, the, the physical barriers are there in place. And then we always have, also have team members that are trained by knowing each resident. Um, which residents tend to, uh, be more, uh, mobile and ambulate. So.
When you said the w- freedom of choice, I'm in a memory care unit. Loosen sometimes and I'm not others. I decide that I want to take a walk outside and go over to the coffee shop. I could do that?
No. Uh, yeah. So if, if you were a, a resident that was wanting to leave, so freedom of choices, uh, we would take in a one-on-one capacity or a one-on-two capacity, a couple of residents to go experience anything that's outside of the dedicated memory care area.
So effectively it's monitored.
Yeah, that, those are, that's a highly regulated, that's a highly regulated environment.
We're not fencing this place off, right? We, it's, it's, it's controlled through the design of the building.
That's correct.
The next step down, I assume is a different form of management of the population, the assisted living?
When you say next step down, um.
Meaning in terms of that level of health care or maybe age or whatever you want to.
Yeah. So the community is designed to allow folks to age in place. And, and so, um, the, m- most senior living communities, this isn't just thrive and it will be this one as well. Most folks, once they move in, um, they again, develop friendships and kind of live out their years within our community. Um, a- as, as the health needs rise and, and maybe health starts to fail, uh, typically a family will employ a home health group or a hospice group that they'll contract to come in and guide them through those last stages of life.
I'm looking at the, the assisted living opponent is in the middle of this plan, right?
That's right.
There's two court, get in courts for parking.
Yeah, two. What? You, you broke up there, um, uh, Mr. Chadwick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't facing the mic.
That's all right.
I'll move the plan. The that group of people are generally ambulatory, right?
Yeah. Um, so I think in forms of cognition. A- and so i- independent living residents would be, you know, cognitively in the similar place to all of us on this call. Assisted living residents, um, are, are on a spectrum from as cognitive or sharper as those of us on the call, but may have physical, maybe in a wheelchair, maybe in a walker, maybe recently broken a hip. And so those are folks that have limited, uh, ambulatory, uh, for whatever reason. Um, they're 98 years old and they've had two hip surgeries. And so they need the ability to access, uh, dining and social activities without having to walk very far. Th- those are folks. It's a mobility determination why, you know, people have that option to move in.
Well, obviously that one and the, the area that would be a, well, you said you do not have community dining rooms. You have some other facility.
Yeah. If you were to look at the, the plans, I think.
Cafeteria, correct? Are the assisted living going to take their meals in some location other than their unit?
Yeah. If you look on the plans, there's reference in the area that's dining, um, o- on the plans. And I, uh, again, without being able to share my screen, I, I would point.
I can see it.
Okay. Yeah. So that, that area is kind of the central dining location. And, and within that box, there may be, you know, a wall that was separated to have a casual dining option on one side and a more, you know, white linen dining on the other side. But a lot of the dining would happen there. And then some residents would choose to eat in that cafe lounge, uh, area, which is a, a, a very casual setting.
So they're going to have to walk across that one driveway or whatever to get to that facility. Is that how it works?
Um, yeah, it's, it's pedestrian centric. So side sidewalk, uh, centric. And, and so, you know, we, we created, um, if you look at the, again, the outline of the, the folks that will be living here. Um, we, we, we tried our best to create as dense as possible, the, the units, um, uh, to, to create walkability for the, the needs of the residents at that age. And so, um, yeah, they'll, they'll be able to walk. It's a very m- marked pedestrian, uh, feeling, uh, uh, or, or noted area. It's hard to see on these black and white renderings because we haven't moved to full schematic. Um.
I've been looking at the plans for quite a while. I think I. The, the, the real thing that's coming to mind is you started in the southeast, you said, and moved your way up the Atlantic seaboard. And you're going to get into New Jersey where you have winter. Is that going to be an issue with this design? I mean, this is unusual design for assisted living. Normally they are larger, more apartment shaped buildings, which have common facilities within. And, uh, uh, this is, that, this is not that.
Mm-hmm. Um, and so.
Criticize, I'm just trying to figure out how it's going to work.
Yeah. Uh, uh, very aware, um, again, our, our, our partner and, uh, general contractor is, uh, been in business up there for 63 years. And then the four years that we've been working with them, uh, the majority of the building that they've done, which is why we selected them, um, it has all been within a couple hours drive of their office in Patterson, New Jersey. And so, um, we really leaned on their legacy knowledge. Uh, and David, um, is second generation. His father started that business. And, and so we really let them lead as far as the way weather impacts, uh, mobility and circulation across the, the community. And so we, we don't have any concerns about this and, and spent significant time with, uh, architects and engineers to make sure that it will work really well.
What you do in Montville?
What did we do?
Montville is a different building, correct? It's.
Uh, it is. Yes, sir. It, it is. And that was mainly due to the nature of a, a long and, and narrow, uh, site, uh, that, that we, we selected there.
Is it, is it a building or a multiple?
Um, there's, there's two separate buildings. And so, uh.
It's not this design though.
It's, it's not this design. This design's more similar to what we did in Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Guys, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have to just two questions. Um, one question is, um, can you please describe a little bit more of the parking during holidays? When everybody wants to go visit their dad on Father's Day or is, is there valet parking or enough parking all around the buildings in order to accommodate that?
Um, so, so the answer to that is, uh, it's, y- e- each community takes on a life of its own. Unfortunately, we've had some communities where, um, the visitation of families is, is lower and that, none of that's ever needed. In other instances, we have used valet services to make sure that we're, uh, you know, tightly, uh, holding a rein on, on, uh, you know, parking for those certain events. Typically that's, you know, five to 10 times a year where there's like a, in July 4th celebration or uh, Christmas or Hanukkah or wh- wh- whatever the local traditions might be. And, and, um, and so I, hopefully that, that answers your question. So it's kind of a spectrum on an as needed basis as the community leases up.
Next question. My only other question is, will animals be permitted?
They, they will. Yeah. And so typically we do an interview process with, um, it's, it's typically cats or dogs. And, um, uh, cats aren't usually the issue. We do, we do, and it sounds silly, but it's been very effective. We do an interview with the animal um, to see how they interact with strangers. And, um, I, I would say in our independent living and assisted living environments, we have, I don't know, anywhere from 5% of our residents, 10% that may have a, a pet. Uh, we don't allow aggressive breeds, uh, just fundamentally it's a no. Um, and so usually it's more of a, if you think about it, a lot of these residents are moving in from an isolated, uh, environment, having lived at home and not able to move around as much. And so that animal becomes their, their best friend. And so it's always hard when we have to say no and it doesn't cross the, we have to keep the, the health and safety of the larger population in mind.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question and then I'm finished.
Am I good?
Um, sir, Mr. Stretch, um, at your Montville property, do you know how many, uh, residents, um, are within the five, like, uh, have resided within a five mile radius of that facility?
I, I, I don't know off the top of my head exactly. U- usually what happens is as lease up starts, a couple of months in, we'll, we'll run, uh, it's called a heat map just to understand where they're coming from. Um, so we, I don't know that number right now.
Okay. Well, if you could furnish that later on, that'll be great. Um, and it's relation to your uh, testimony that 90% of residents at your facilities usually come from within a five mile radius. Thank you.
Any other member of the board have any questions or this witness of the testimony given this evening?
Uh, by my, is it Montville or Montvale?
That's a great question. And, and, uh, we, we're right up there tucked, uh, one exit away from the New York border. So it's Montvale. Uh, yeah.
That's right. Cause I kept hearing Montville and I'm saying, that's right on the corner for us. So thank you.
That's, that's totally different. So it's Montvale. And, and just to be clear, that community's still under construction. So Ms. Snyder, I don't, I don't know. I may have accidentally made it sound like there was, uh, residents that live there today. The only thing we know right now is people who've put deposits to move in. We're still, you know, almost a year out and we have a lot of deposits that are already coming in to move in. And so I don't know those people who will potentially move in with deposits where they're coming from.
So, uh, so, uh, so to your point, um, out of all the projects that you have residents already moved in, which project would you most, uh, similarly compare to what you're proposing here in Precipiny?
Yeah, it's been pieces of whatever's been most successful. And so there's a little bit of our Thrive on Skidaway project that's, that's in there, which is the proportion of independent living to more of the care environment. Um, uh, the, the model is a, it's just a larger version of what we did up on, um, Lookout Mountain and just outside of Chattanooga, Tennessee. Um, this is, uh, you know, about two X on the size of that. And that's, that's a smaller market, uh, very, very small market. And so that, that community has, uh, cottages just as, as this.
So that wouldn't be, that, yeah, that wouldn't be appropriate to compare. I guess I heard Georgia. So if you were to compare which, um, um, facility that is from an operational perspective, a configuration perspective, maybe topographical, geographical, whatever it is, uh, of course, we would have to consider the intensity of the population. From your repertoire, what is most similarly, um, to what you're proposing in Precipiny? Is it the Georgia facility?
Yeah, we, we actually have a handful of communities inside of Georgia. And so I, again, uh, I would compare it most likely to our Thrive on Skidaway, uh, community that's opened in the last, uh, within this last year.
Thank you.
Quick question, and I apologize if you've answered this and any of the other.
No problem. No problem.
Where are you guys? Where's your headquarters located?
Yeah, it's in Atlanta, Georgia.
How many facilities do you have in New Jersey?
Uh, we have the one that's under construction. This will be our second. And then our real focus has been that, uh, N- N- New Jersey, uh, area. And, and so we're, we're, we're not the largest operator in the world. And so we don't have the ability to operate with excellence if we're running all over the country. And, and so we've, we've targeted, uh, this area, um, to deepen roots. So.
So you have these, the one project in Montvale that's under construction, this potential project, and that's it?
No, we have a, a couple of other that we're pursuing, uh, throughout the New Jersey area.
But none actually built?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
If the board has done, I'm going to open up questions to the public. I'm going to preface opening up the questions to the public by reminding the public that if you're represented by council, you are not permitted to ask questions at this point. Now, Ms. Jolie has a list of the residents that are represented by council. And if you raise your hand, she's going to look at the list and see if you're eligible or not to ask a question. Now, I know I said this last time, and I'm going to tell two members of the public who I believe were on the list. And if I'm wrong, I apologize. Mr. Sarah and Mr. Kamora, uh, your names came up on the, uh, list of, um, residents that was represented by council. Um, I'm also going to remind members of the public that A, the people on this board are volunteers who give up their time with no financial benefit. Just because they are concerned about this community. Obviously you're all concerned about the community because you're attending this meeting. But you're mostly concerned about your, your residents and the, um, proximity to this project. This board is concerned about all of this. That's number one. Number two, if a question has been asked, don't ask the question again because most times the witness is not going to change his answer. Um, and if you do not, uh, abide by the rules of asking questions and attempt to testify, I will have, uh, Mr. Hocker cut you off. Okay? So I'm not, I am, maybe I'm being blunt, but we have rules and regulations that are, that are uh, required by the state of New Jersey and how these meetings are run. This is not our own, you know, we decide to do things like this. We have rules and regulations. Mr. King, is there anything I forgot?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, you, you covered everything.
Now, uh, Laura, let's give the opportunity to the attorney to ask questions first. Okay? If he's, if he's there. Do you see him? Can he identify himself?
You're.
He's not there.
The attorney, um, and, um, is Mr. McKeon participating in this, uh, meeting?
The attorney does not have his hand up.
All right. He's, uh, I don't see him with, you know, quickly looking. Uh, we do have, um, two people with their hands raised. Should we move on to them?
Is, is, uh, James Bryce, he's got his hand raised. Is that the attorney?
Yes, he does. No, no, James Bryce is.
I believe he is the attorney.
Yeah, his hand's been raised.
All right. You know what? You're correct. James Bryce is a, so you want to unmute, uh, Mr. Bryce?
Done.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, James.
Thank you. Yes, I've, uh, I'm sorry, wasn't able to respond because I was put on mute. I am the attorney on behalf of the Friends of Precipiny Green Space. Uh, just for the benefit of the record, my name is James Brison from the law firm, Murphy McKeon, uh, Uh I have Riverdale, New Jersey, and I'm appearing on behalf of the Friends of Parsippany Green Space. Mr. Stretch, thank you for um appearing tonight. I do have some questions, I'm gonna apologize in advance because I'm gonna be uh skipping around a little bit. I I didn't mean to, but we've covered a lot of material here and um I'm going to try to organize it as best as I can. Uh when you began testifying today, the attorney uh that's representing the applicant indicated that you're an expert. Um the attorney didn't specify what your area of expertise is, but do you, sir, consider yourself an area or an expert in any area of of land use?
I I do not um consider myself an expert in the area of of land use.
Do you consider yourself an expert in any field?
Uh I do.
What field is that, sir?
Uh operations of se- and culture development of senior living communities.
Okay. Uh um how do you find define a senior living community?
Uh there's an industry definition and it's the the spectrum that I went over a little earlier. Um if I need to get walk through that, I I can if you'd like.
No, I'm just asking what the definition of a senior living uh community is because I'm not familiar in the state of New Jersey that we have such a designation.
Sure. So senior living from an industry perspective covers the the spectrum that I covered earlier in my my testimony. So that I I'd reference that point.
Okay, and your experience in the field is ten years as a consultant and four years as the president of Thrive?
Uh I was chief operating officer of um a freestanding memory care company. And then I've had uh designations within the industry. Um I I don't know if you'd want me to go through those or.
Please do.
Yeah, um mo- most recently, uh this is a little, it's uncomfortable going through resume and things, but uh ha- happy to do it. Um uh Senior Housing News every year, uh Senior Housing News is the is the main trade publication within our our industry. Um every year they uh award nine um American changemakers within senior living. And uh it's, you can find it on Google. I was just actually uh named one of the nine American changemakers within senior living uh by Senior Housing News. And so it was humbled. Uh went through an an interview, a substantial interview process. Uh that went and a lot of that had to do with design, uh the future of development, the the way that the industry's aired um within developments in the past, uh referencing some of my earlier point points in regards to warehousing seniors and uh the communities being developed, uh more like hospitals rather than than residences. And so um a- again, I had no no say in that. Um and then a a variety of uh dementia certifications, cuz that's how I came into the industry.
What kind of dementia certifications do you have?
Um gone through the NID, so National Institute of Dementia Education, our our company goes through, we're in the middle of that actually today. Uh and tomorrow at five o'clock, if you guys would like to join, you can feel free, we we um been uh NID certified. And then again, if you wanted to go on to LinkedIn and get go through that, ha- happy to um.
Well, let me ask you, you indicated that you have a degree from Baylor, correct?
Yes, sir.
What is that degree in?
Finance.
Okay, it was in finance, it's a bachelor's degree?
Correct.
Is that your highest level of education?
It is. For formal education, correct.
Okay, now you indicated that you're an expert in the field of senior living operations and relationships?
Uh I said culture development.
Okay, culture development, I'm sorry, let me make a note of that. Is there uh any type of curriculum uh offered by any university or uh entity of higher education or even recognized by a professional association that has a degree or recognition uh for expertise in senior living and culture development?
Uh there is uh formal education on uh senior living. Uh there's a, there's a variety of universities and as the industry's taken root, um there there's been more and more universities that have opened up offerings for that from a formal education standpoint.
Okay, do you have any of those degrees or diplomas?
I do not.
Okay. Um when you were studying formally, did you have any specificity in a field of sc- of study for uh senior living operations or cultural culture development?
Uh I, but a- again, um if we were gonna spend time going through formal education, happy to to speak to those. Um I I've on a consistent basis, at least once a semester, I'm teaching back and forth on senior living within the uh Baylor University School of Entrepreneurship and then also the Baylor University School of Social Work. Uh the majority of people get into senior living. And so I think uh having the opportunity to to teach and and in uh in that fashion, I don't know if it's formal education, but higher education is looking to me um a- as an outlet for that. Um a- and so uh school of social work, most of the people who get into this industry come from a social work background. Um or or have the hearts of a social worker um that work in a direct care capacity. And so uh I think to get to the and and to save time for more questions, um for formal education, uh not not gonna show up on the radar in in senior living specific. Uh but what has is when I come into the industry, uh I I've spent hundreds of hours living uh inside of the dementia environments was helped drive a lot of the deep convictions about how we've designed this community. And and so uh I've surrounded myself with a team of experts on our team in each function, uh whether it's clinical or uh development or uh land use as you referenced earlier.
Okay. Um but I I'm really trying to be more specific and I I'm not trying to uh uh to become argumentative here, but you were offered as an expert. Um you've indicated that you have no formal education in the field of study in the areas of um as you would say, senior living uh operations or culture development. I'm not aware of a particular field of study uh in that expertise and uh I I would object to the witness being considered an expert uh for the purposes of this record.
I I don't know if you want me to to respond to that or.
No, there's no need. Dude, he made a comment, he didn't ask a question.
Okay.
Uh I interposed actually an objection for the board uh that I don't think that the expert or that the witnesses established nor has the applicant established the witness as an expert in any field that's recognized. Um I think by this board, certainly not in land use, and that the board should not consider the opinions uh or testimony as expert opinions or testimony.
Could I ask a question for clarification, uh Chairman? I I don't know how the the process works.
Go right ahead.
Um so, Mr. Bruce, it my understanding is if I if if someone were to have a formal education uh in the the specific field and uh s- didn't spend the hours following up, but it how much weight are you weighting formal education versus actual day-to-day involvement for uh years or a decade?
Well, I I think it's it's this, this is, I think, a question for the attorneys, for your attorney. I brought it up earlier, there's certain procedures that have to occur to qualify someone for an as an expert. Uh it's education and ex- experience and your attorney, Mr. Vogel is well aware of what that requirement is, and he can explain it to you. I don't know that.
I'll make, I'll make my. I'll make my.
Can I, can I just say that, and I'm gonna use an analogy, and it may not be the best analogy. Uh there are experts in traffic, and just because you have a driver's license and you're a very good driver and you've driven for many years, you're not an expert in traffic.
I'm sorry.
Did somebody say something?
Mr. Chairman, my observation?
Yes.
Uh most experts are here to give us their opinion. Uh this witness really only testified the facts. He hasn't given us any opinions. So I don't think we, it matters whether we consider him an expert or not.
If Mr., if you recall, Mr. King made for whatever purpose, and I don't know why he interjected, it was unusual for an attorney for a board to do that at the beginning before I even had the witness testify, but he did it. And so what I did is I stayed away from Mr. Stretch and asking him, did not ask him one opinion question.
I noticed.
So he, so he's a fact witness and not an expert, let's move on.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Um just to to be, take a more global perspective, uh during your testimony, you kept on referring to age in place. Uh but you qualified that testimony by indicating that you don't really perform the full spectrum, correct? I should say, full spectrum of care.
How are you defining the full spectrum of care?
Uh well, I I think that you indicated that the full spectrum of care indicates uh active adult, uh independent living, assisted living, uh memory care, and then long-term care, correct?
Yeah, senior senior living is typically defined as that that middle bucket um from um independent living to uh memory care.
Okay. And where do you find that definition, sir?
Uh it's it's easily referenced, uh so ha- happy to to pull that and circulate it to you.
But you don't know where it comes from off the top of your head?
Uh every industry conference and kind of uh article and write-up, the majority of those would reference, that's what senior living would be uh in inside of that spectrum.
Okay, is there, is there a license in the state of New Jersey for senior living?
Uh there's not.
Okay.
To my knowledge, there's licenses, uh uh and again, you can go through, there's a variety of designations uh to lead i- inside of uh w- one of those uh assisted living or memory care licensure.
Okay. Uh but just to be clear, and I think just to am- amplify a bit from Mr. Chadwick's um questioning before, you are not seeking a licensure as a continuing care retirement community that would otherwise offer uh the full spectrum of care, including long, long-term nursing, correct?
Correct.
All right, so if, when we talk about people aging in place, it's possible that there would be, I guess, tenants of your facility that could age out of this facility if they need something beyond memory care, correct?
It's incorrect. People don't age out of these communities.
Okay, what if someone need requires uh skilled nursing care on a long-term basis? Do they stay in your community?
Yeah, if they need skilled nursing, um a- again, the partnerships that you form, uh we we provide those options. The majority of residents uh a- age in place and um uh we're brave able to provide the services they need through the end of life. Or partner with uh home health or hospice agencies that do the same.
Okay. Now, do you provide any type of home health care uh to people in cottages?
Uh that's a great question. We've been studying the the home health uh care uh market for a while and then um currently today, we do not operate in home health care. Um a- and then uh the community or the people, residents that live inside of our independent living cottages uh have the freedom of choice, just like you would at your residence, to uh contract with a local home health agency. We typically uh interview the majority of them and then um uh kinda get the top three and then most residents come in as if they need uh a little more help from a care perspective, ask our opinion on that. And we usually refer, you know, three or four that kind of stood at the top of the pile.
Okay, but just to be clear, Thrive itself as part of its operation does not provide skilled long-term nursing care to its residents, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it does provide some type and form of assisted living, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now I'm looking at the site plan that was uh submitted with this particular application. And and I have to tell you, I'm a bit confused. But let me just be clear, you're proposing one hundred and fifty-six residential units for this project, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now of those, one hundred and fifty-six, there are fifty-six memory care units, correct?
Yeah, correct. And just referencing a a question you just, just for clarification purposes, I'm thinking through what you just asked. The the skilled nursing facility is largely focused for short-term stints. It's not something that people move into and stay unless there's um designated towards end-of-life scenarios, um where the care uh is a trick trick tube or it's some sort of nursing uh maintained environment. So they're typically short-term in nature, uh just to to give uh reference back to that. The answer to your current question is yes, fifty-six uh memory care uh l- l- living um uh fif- fifty-six memory care units.
Okay, and just to reference your your secondary comment, just to reiterate, Thrive would not be able to provide any type of trade care, correct?
No, yeah, that's that's a, that's a nursing, more of a hospital environment.
And and tr- Thrive wouldn't even provide skilled short-term nursing care independently to people living in a cottage, correct?
Yeah, the the licensure that comes with a skilled nursing facility is separate from the licensure that we would seek.
Okay, so you're gonna be seeking a license from, I assume, the Department of Health uh for uh memory care units?
Yeah, we have a, our our licensing team runs point on that, yes.
Do you have any understanding of what the licensing requirements are for the state of New Jersey pertaining to um licensing standards for dementia care homes?
Yeah, we have a a, but again, I I referenced earlier in a licensing team. Uh again, we've got almost a thousand team members in in several different states and it varies from county to county and state to state. So I I wouldn't be able to speak specifically to to Parsippany, but there's a a member on our team that that focuses their attention on that.
Okay, but you're not qualified to know exactly what type of license is required, correct?
Uh I wouldn't feel comfortable answering that without our our team member who leads that uh alongside me.
Okay. I would assume that that would be the same answer that you would give for a uh assisted living residence in comprehensive personal care home?
Yeah, the the licensure for assisted living and memory care is under the same, the same licensure, so um. I don't know, does that answer your question?
Well, I I do, listen, if, let me just be very clear, I'm not here to try and trick you. I'm trying to understand what the level and probe the level of of your knowledge is. I just asked you about whether or not you had any understanding of the licensing standards for dementia care homes. You indicated that you didn't. Then I asked you whether or not the same would equally apply for uh assisted living residences comprehensive personal care homes. Then you indicated just now that they're under the same licensure. If you don't know that to be the fact, I don't want you to say that as a fact to the board. Because I can tell you this, sir, they're not the same license.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, so just to educate you a little bit, they they're in two different sections of of our administrative code from our Department of Health about licensure and they each have separate licensing standards.
The witness has already indicated that he's not the person involved in licensure. Why don't you move on to the next question?
Because, Mr. Vogel, you said that they were the same.
Chairman, can we just have less posturing by the attorney and more questions?
This is not relevant.
May- maybe, maybe it's necessary that your licensing person come and testify.
I I I fully intend to have that such a witness.
Okay, happy to do that.
All right, Mr. Stretch, going back to the slate plan, so we have the fifty-six um memory care units, which I assume that you're gonna apply for a license for fifty-six memory care beds, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now on the slate plan, there's about a hundred more units that are. that are divided between independent apartments and independent cottages, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, interestingly, on the site plan, and what I'm trying to understand is that I'm part of the site plan and I don't have the ability to show you the exhibit, so I apologize. But it indicates that there's assisted living in one building. And then it also indicates in the cottages, independent living cottages with services, one-story, two-bedroom cottages, garages. And it's actually quite confusing because then you go and you look at what it says on the project description. It says fifty independent living cottage, I'm sorry, strike that, fifty independent backslash, assisted living cottages. And then it says underneath that, fifty independent backslash assisted living apartments. Do you agree that that's on the site plan as a project description?
I, I don't have those in front of me, and so I'm, I'm gonna, uh, a- a- again, just trust that it's saying, I, I, I can speak to the, the services component. It's probably just a bad word choice, like what falls under the definition of services? A- and so, services would be services that are appropriate to an independent living resident. Services would be appropriate to an assisted living r- resident, so here on one, services is, s- services.
I want to be clear, because this, this project, you know, has been sold as, as assisted living and memory care. The independent cottages, as far as Thrive is concerned, the hundred or so cottages, they are not offered with assisted living, correct?
Um, I think the site plan references fifty cottages, not a hundred, that you just stated.
Uh, no, actually, sir, it indicates, and I'm looking at, I'm looking at two pages of the site plan, just so you're aware. Uh, the project description, and I'll read it verbatim because I can't show it to you. Says applicant seeks use relief from the township of Parsippany Troy Hills R1 and R3 zoning standards to allow for the construction of a senior assisted backslash independent living facility consisting of the following, colon, sub-paragraph, fifty independent backslash assisted living cottages. New paragraph, fifty independent backslash assisted living apartments. And then it says twenty-eight memory care units with a possibility of an additional twenty-eight units in the future. And then when I look at the, and that's what I'm trying to understand, we have independent assisted living units, and then we have independent living cottages. And all I'm trying to understand and reconcile is whether any of the cottages, let's call them the freestanding cottages, have any type of assisted living component to it.
Yeah, the services are referencing there, and again, I don't have the, the, the document, um, available in a virtual setting. So, um, the services there, we, if you remember, we referenced earlier, um, I think one of the board members was asking about town car service and concierge options. Um, th- their services are available specific to an independent living resident. And there are services that are available, uh, that obviously amp up and are focused more on care. The same services independent are offered to independent living, so, um, and, and again, an IL resident in those cottages could turn on services, uh, through a local home health agency, um, as, as I referenced earlier, so, does that answer your, your question, Mr. Rice?
Well, no, I, let me ask it this way, correct? You're gonna be seeking a license for assisted living, correct?
Correct.
Okay, how many beds are you gonna be seeking that license for?
Uh, that, that's probably a better direction, so I appreciate the, the clarity. Uh, we're seeking a license for, uh, the apart, remember I told, talked about at the beginning of the testimony? I'm not sure if you were on, but three different living options. Uh, option two and option three, uh, which are the apartments and the memory care, those would be licensed, uh, l- living options, so, hopefully that offers more clarity.
Okay, so I think that it does, because the, the cottages-
Fifty cottages are, are not licensed, um, for assisted living or, or memory care. So ma- maybe that clears it up. A hundred and eighteen.
It certainly goes, it goes a long way in helping me clarify it, so thank you. Because looking at the, the site plan, i- it said these backslashes and I was trying, trying to reconcile what exactly is assisted and licensed, which is not, um. So you indicated as well that you were talking about the amenities, um, and you also indicated that there was twenty-four hour nursing care. Um, is that with a registered nurse?
That's right.
Okay, is there a nursing station or facility that, that, that nurse would be stationed at?
Um, it typically, uh, that's kind of an old-school model where the nurse is sitting kind of as a dominant presence. Uh, we, we prefer for ours to be moving around, possibility to interact with residents on a consistent basis. So tho- those shifts, that's why we focus on eight rather than twelve-hour shifts. So they're able to stay up on their feet and engaging with residents. So, uh, there, there is, as we talked about earlier, uh, med closets and, and charting areas. But there's not like a, a, a clinical nursing hub where they just sit there all day long, um, so that, that answer your question?
Um, no, let's say I'm a resident and I need nursing care, do I call the nurse or does the nurse, is there just one nurse? I, I'm asking for operations reasons, I under- trying to understand the nursing staff and levels.
Y- yeah, so our, our team interacts with, uh, walkie-talkies and so, or, or earpieces and, and more of our newer communities, and so they're able to communicate o- on, on an immediate basis, uh, if there's a, a care need. Uh, typically, the RN is acting, acting as the coach, uh, towards the care team. A- and so, um, i- i- accessible at, at all times, so.
Okay, is there only one on, on staff at all times or are there multiple?
Oh, no, there's, uh, L- yeah, LPNs, um, a- as, as well, so, yeah, there's, there's a, there's definitely more than one.
Okay, and they're located, I would assume centrally in the memory care areas and assisted living areas?
Yeah, able to access all, uh, able to access all of the, the care-driven, you, the licensed units.
Now, when you were talking about the shift work, you indicated that you have, you, you're proposing a staggered, um, shift in this scenario like you've done in near other schools, correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, what other schools, or what other developments have you had that were close to schools? Were this close to, what, strike that, how, in what other development have you as Thrive undertaken that is adjacent or very proximate to a high school?
Let me go down the acuity spectrum, I mean, the educational spectrum. And so our community, which I referenced earlier, uh, up on Lookout Mountain, Georgia, i- is across from Covenant College. We have a partnership with them, they, they've actually, because of the success, it just transacted and they took an ownership position because of the, uh, the relationships that have developed between those students and then our residents and how frequent those interactions were happening, and so it's been a, a, a great success. Um, a- and then, um, there's a community down in Katy, Texas, which is a suburb of Houston. And, um, that was built directly across from, uh, Wood Creek Middle School. And, um, those are the two that come to top of mind, um, a- as far as like direct adjacencies. So we've had some that are, uh, bikeable, um, and so, uh, and then, so I, uh, does that answer your question?
Th- that's fine, if that's your answer, I, that's-
Yeah, great.
Well, let me ask you this, when, um, you talk about an ownership position of that college, what, what does that mean?
Yeah, I can't go into the, the specifics, but, uh, it, it's been, it's been really awesome to see the way that the schools interacted with that community and, um, just the friendships that have developed between young and young and old. And so, um, there's a group of, of folks, um, and again, uh, our, our chief investment officer is not on the phone with that, uh, or not on the, on the, uh, un- under testimony with me, so he could speak to the specifics. But there's a, there's a formal relationship between the school is the best way to describe it and Thrive. Um, al- also going back, uh, again, to the point that you asked about, uh, nursing and accessibility, the, all of the care, uh, centric units having an e-call system or emergency call system through a variety of, of wearables, um, so whether it's a pendant or a, a, a designated watch, um, it's not fun to walk around with a, a pendant on your neck, kind of designated that you might need care. So we've moved, moved more towards a, a progressive dignity-centric, so the, a resident, if they need something, will be able to tap their wearable or a, a pull a cord that's, uh, accessible inside of the common spaces in their, their rooms. But those, those are other ways, if, if we physically aren't present, that they have to ask for help.
Okay, now, you were asked earlier today about, um, uh, employees and habits scales, correct?
Sure.
Okay, so my question is, a- and you actually testified, if I'm correct, that you actually have projections about what your actual employment needs are, uh, based upon that scale, was that fair?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, propose, let's assume that this entire project is built out with the one hundred and fifty-six units and two hundred and some odd beds. How many employees per shift are you going to need on-site? What number?
Yeah, uh, it's, it's right around thirty, uh, in a shift.
Thirty per shift?
Yeah, and that's broken up into salaried, um, team members, which really kind of work on a, uh, schedule that they develop on their own with their, uh, leader. A- and then there's the a- hourly team that's coming in and out, uh, in a more shift-oriented environment.
Okay, fair enough, does that also include, I would assume chefs?
Yeah, that's, that's right, that, m- most of those teams, well, there's a, there's a head chef called a Convivium Director. And, um, and then he's got a team of, uh, folks that work in the kitchen with him.
Okay, so we're talking soup to nuts, nursing assistants, uh, drivers, uh, chefs, nurses, thirty employees per shift.
Yeah, a- and again, I told you, as acuity, uh, changes, there may be a variation, uh, by a couple percentage points on that, which may be one to two plus, uh, just based on the needs of the community.
No, that's fine, that's fine, so now, um,
So Bryce, can I introduce, interrupt you for a minute?
Yes, absolutely.
It is now ten fourteen, we normally cut off at ten o'clock. Uh, approximately, how many more questions do you have?
I have a bunch, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna be going into the testimony, um, about the amenities, um, about the, uh,
Okay.
The various aspects of the operations that weren't covered by, um, by the prior witness that were deferred to this witness, um, so I do, I probably have about twenty to thirty more minutes of, of questioning.
All right, I think we're gonna have to, uh, carry this case to another evening then. Um, Nora, what do we have available?
I have nothing available until October sixth.
Mr. Chairman, um, uh, since, uh, we had, you had the, um, conversation with, uh, Ms. Jolie about, uh, going, um, to, uh, hearings that are in, uh, put people in attendance as a, as opposed to Zoom. Uh, and the indication was, as I understand it, uh, is that this would stay Zoom because of the inability to have a, uh, location that would be able to, uh, house all the people that are interested. So on that basis, is it possible? And given the fact that this has gone on so long, to have a special meeting that would be, uh, conducted by Zoom, then each of the members of the board would not be as inconvenienced as having to go to a, uh, a place for the meeting and can continue to hear the matter at home. And the members of the public, including Mr. Bryce, can continue in the same vein they are now by Zoom. That would allow us to not have to wait till October and, uh, we could accommodate getting this done in some ra- rational period of time.
Uh, Mr. Vogel, there's three issues here, one is availability of the members because of, two, because of vacation, summertime, we don't make sure that we're gonna have at least six or seven to hear. We can always have one person listen to the tape, but I don't wanna have a special meeting and only have four people show up, um.
We, we also have, we've had a, a, at least one other special meeting that I could think of where, and I understand we're trying to make up for lost time with COVID, but we're adding half-hours, we're adding special meetings. It's-
Well, David, David, let me tell you, back in nineteen ninety, when I started on this board, we met three nights a month, seven-thirty to eleven, one meeting in December, two meetings in November. So we are way under what my, what my history is, so, if I, you know, if I asked you guys to add another meeting during the year, uh, I would, I would really appreciate the cooperation. And if you can't, sir, please tell us and, and we'll, and we'll get somebody to replace you, okay? I'm asking, uh, we've got, we've got a big, big agenda because we lost the year. So I'm asking everyone to give a little extra effort. So now the question is, Nora, would we be able to get a date? And then if we have a date, we can ask people to, to see if they're still there.
Well, d- do we want to, instead of pulling the board tonight at this hour, uh, I'll work on it, uh, we could announce it next week?
So you're proposing we carry this case to next week to set a date?
Ju- yes, just to set a date.
Is that okay, Mr. Vogel? Uh, I mean, we, you know, absent, Ms. Jolie's gonna have to do a lot of work to, to, to get everything. We're already, we're already adding half-hours to meetings to be residential, so residential, so I'm gonna interfere with the, with the deviations. Um, so if that's, if you're in agreement with that, we'll carry this case to next Wednesday night, which is the twenty-third. And at that point, uh, between now and then, Nora, we'll pull the board and we'll see what we can do in terms of coming up with a date. Now, I think things are opening up in the state of New Jersey, there's no longer the six-feet minimum, isn't that correct at a meeting? Anybody aware, Mr. King, are you aware of that? Anybody aware?
It's correct.
Yes.
It's, it's correct, however, um, you know, the, the first time, uh, this meeting was being presented, we had close to two hundred people, which is, and then COVID struck and, and this platform worked great and-
Okay. I have no problem with this, I have no problem with this at all, this is actually, um, in a lot of ways easier when we only have one application. So the, the objective here is to see if we can squeak out another date, uh, for this application. Um, hopefully in the next maybe four to five days or so.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, learning here, and back to staying within guidelines. Uh, why, I, I understand when we have a public hearing, we have to let everybody come in. And the first time we heard this case, people were in the hallway, out in the doorway, and we had to cancel. My question is, can we not have a registered list of people that would like to attend and have a facility that could facilitate them and hear this case under those guidelines? And if they haven't been registered to attend, they can't attend, is that proper or not?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna defer to Mr. King, I don't think that sounds really good.
No, it's not.
Open public, open public meeting.
Public. I, 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 I understand that, okay, my, so the point be, we can't do that, Mr. Vogel. So if, if we have a meeting and a hundred and fifty people show up and we can't facilitate that, we can't hold the meeting.
That's worse.
Yeah, it's a, it's a two-edged sword, because if you then just stick it out like that, anybody will sign and, uh, you, you get a list that, uh,
Okay.
really represented, um, so it, to answer you, Mr. Chairman, I'm, you know, I'm not insensitive to all the problems, we've all been through this, uh, and, uh, the COVID did, put us in a place I, uh, I've, I'd appreciate it, uh, if I get an invite, to the twenty-third meeting so that I can weigh in and whatever you discuss, hopefully.
That will be an in-person meeting, Mr. Vogel. Mr. Vogel, that'll be an in-person meeting next week.
I apologize, that's
It's virtual.
Twenty, the twenty-third is virtual and that will be the last virtual meeting other than this.
I apologize.
Then this application, it'll be the last virtual meeting, which this one is likely to continue virtual.
Okay, so, so Mr. Chairman, I certainly agreeable to you trying to put something together between now and the twenty-third and I'll, I'll tap in on the twenty-third. Hopefully, together, we can come up with some kind of scheduling that works for both the board and the applicant.
Well, hopefully, you'll know before the twenty-third what, what our plans are, okay?
Okay.
So we're going to carry this, Mr. Chairman, with extensions and no further notice?
Carry this case to next, the twenty-third without further notice and with whatever extensions are required. Members of the public, this is the only notice you'll get that this meeting is being carried to next Wednesday night. At that point, we will decide when the next meeting will be.
And Mr. Vogel, your, your, your client will provide any needed extension?
Yeah, that's not, not a problem.
I thank you, Mr. Vogel.
Can I mention to that effect?
That the next date will be announced on the twenty-third without any further notification.
That's correct. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anybody opposed? Okay. Any other business, Nora?
No.
Okay, all you fathers, have a nice Father's Day and.
You too, Chairman.
See you next Wednesday. Take care.
Have a good week, everyone. I move to.
The chair is on.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Bernie. All in favor?
All right, we're leaving.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.